Okay, team, let's get going. All right. Okay. I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. And Clerk Mayor, we need to have a roll call again.
Kay Simon-Holland.
Here.
Scott Kelly. John Mayer. Melina Raymond. Licalina. Angela Taylor, not here. Oh, oh, just in time. Do you have a torty excuse from your mother, though? If not, they have these machines in the high school. You go there and get your excuse now. So, go get it.
An excuse.
Do we have trustee detention?
That's right.
Okay, we have a quorum. I would like to ask Mr. Joe Gabeika to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(audience) We constitute a flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gabeika. And it's nice to see you back after your long, long, long exodus of being gone for a day and a half from this organization, or whatever it's been. Okay, Ms. Bachelder, do we have public comment?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Hold on. Just give me one sec.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Duran.
Hello. So, we talked about zoning meeting. I hear talk about rezoning. Like, I do know, if we built our new middle school in Sun Valley, or we should call Desert Sky Middle School, we take a, we're gonna take, follow, we go rezon, like, far away as a western guard, and try to rebalance in east and west of, oh, no, I mean, west of Stray Middle School and east of Sparks Middle School. And here we go, the current zoning for Madison School and Middle School.
JJ, yeah, thank you.
If you like pass around, I sorry, I did not bring the copies. Yeah, you pass around. We pass it over here, I will grab it.
Okay.
And leave.
Yeah.
No, no. Go ahead, Mr. Duran.
Oh, yeah, so, I do support, I think, like, I think the zoning community done a great job for rezoning, like, making diversity better.
Great.
Yep. And we, and tried to balance the women.
That's great.
Awesome.
Well, thank you for paying attention to that. We appreciate it, Mr. Duran. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public comment, and we will move to action to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. A motion by trustee Franklin, second by trustee Dr. Taylor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Oop, we need to pass the, yeah. It's coming around, Mr. Duran. All right, thank you. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda items. And I wanted to ask, on the, let's see, on the zoning committee nominees, are either of those folks here that we, in item 2.25, Jennifer Peterson and Melissa Boson, Melissa, oh, you're both here, okay. Would you like to, before we vote on a consent agenda, would you just like to introduce yourselves for the record? And this is on item 2.25. Ms. Peterson?
I'm Jennifer Peterson.
All right.[264.27][264.27](laughter) Why are you interested in the zoning committee?
I just wanted to be involved in a committee. I was on the calendar committee last year, and I just wanted to be on another committee.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thanks for your willingness to serve, and thanks for sitting through that long meeting to be able to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Melissa? Ms. Boson?
Good afternoon, President, Superintendent, Board of Trustees. My name is Melissa Boson, and I am the President of the Washoe Education Support Professionals. I currently represent close to 700 of our bus drivers, clerical aides, clinical aides, secretaries, nutrition service workers, and the list can go on and on. My interest in being in the zoning committee is because it affects not only the public, but it also affects my members, so I can't wait to be a part of the zoning committee.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for taking the time. It is a huge commitment, and we very much appreciate your attention to it. Are there questions trustees have on consent agenda items? Any questions? Okay. I did want to just quickly make sure on items 2.14 and 2.15, those are related to improvements at Hug High School, and I just wanted to make sure we put on the record that those improvements are of a safety nature, and they are important for us to do regardless of what our repurposing of Hug High School may be. Both the baseball field and the stairs are badly in need of some safety improvements, so those are necessary either way. And then, on item 2.16, we had a question about access to, access roads to the structure sites for the relocation of some power lines for the Wild Creek property. And we do have adequate provisions in the contract, both for us to be able to terminate that contract if needed, and also, we will, if everything goes well, acquire that parcel by August 8th, and then we would begin the construction on August 15th. So, we hope to have those in our, in our ownership. And on item 2.21, we are having property donated, and we are doing some infrastructure improvements in trade, and it is, it's a good deal for the district. We will have property that is in excess value of the cost of the infrastructure improvements, which we would have to make anyway. And then, I think that's all. Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Only thank you to the staff for answering those questions, and also, just their requests. I think, as always, we're gonna attach those as additional information on the agenda materials after the meeting.
Thank you. Yes, we will do so. Okay. Are there any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, do we have any public comment? No, okay. Motion by trustee Taylor, is there a second? Second by trustee Raymond. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, great. And there's all kinds of rustling going on back there. Item 3.01, which is presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding the naming of Sparks High School soccer field as the Joe and Ann Gabeika family soccer field. Mr. Etchard, welcome.
Thank you very much. It is indeed an honor here to be here today for this item, to be able to present this item. As you mentioned earlier, Joe's last day was on Friday, and we've already drug him back to a board meeting, so we really do appreciate that. We were out there in the hallway talking shop, too.
Did he avoid the budget workshop, I hope?[512.46][512.46](laughter)
Some of it. This really is, to me, a changing of the guard. You know, when we talk about the 35 years that Joe has put into this district, I don't think the impact of the district can really be overstated. Forty percent of the schools Joe's had an impact on, either designing and instructing in this district. And when you think about the thousands of projects that he has done over the years, it's obviously impacted every school in our district. I can't think of another individual, from the operational side, that's ever had this kind of impact in our district. But it's really, to me, more than that, because I think it's a lot about the relationships that Joe and Ann have had with so many people in this district. I know that, I personally feel incredibly blessed, I've been spending the last five years working with Joe, and it's just been an absolute honor. And I know it has been for everyone in this community who's been able to work with Joe and Ann. And so, I don't think I've ever met anybody who's ever said a negative word about either one of them. They're just outstanding individuals. And again, like I said, I just feel so blessed to be here tonight. So, what we have tonight is, I want to just read the recommendation to you. To the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, Joe Gabeika has dutifully served the Washoe County School District and the community for over 35 years in the facilities department. Joe's integrity, passion, and knowledge has been an inspiration to all those in the community who have been fortunate enough to work with him. During his tenure, Joe has been intricately involved with the planning, design, and construction of over 40 new schools in Washoe County School District, impacting many generations of students. In addition, Joe directly impacted the students of Washoe County School District by being the soccer coach for Sparks High School for eight years. I think he coached for over 22, I believe. Also, Ann Gabeika has served Washoe County School District for over 28 years, and retired from the district after a distinguished career as both a school secretary and executive assistant to senior directors and area superintendents. Her dedication, commitment, and understanding of the work of our teachers and principals has made a positive difference in the lives of many students and their families. Based on Joe and Ann Gabeika's outstanding service to the students, families, and staff of the Washoe County School District, the undersigned administrators and staff of the Washoe County School District make the following request for your consideration: that the soccer field at Sparks High School be known from this point forward as the Joe and Ann Gabeika family soccer field. And this was signed by all the leadership team at the Washoe County School District, including also Kevin Carroll, the principal at Sparks High School. And at Joe's retirement party, many staff members signed it, including the next superintendent. Paul Dugan was there and came down for the festivities.
Oh, great.
So, that is our recommendation to you.
Great, thank you. Well, we are certainly grateful, Joe and Ann, for your service. We thank you so much. And it's true, what you've said, Pete, it just can't be quantified, the impact and the legacy of the Gabeika family. So, thank you for that. Any comments or questions? Mr. Mayor, I am so surprised.[704.82][704.82](laughter)
I always, I'm always full of surprises.
You are.
You know, I've been around Joe and Ann for a long time, but they are outstanding people in the city of Sparks. Absolutely outstanding. In fact, Joe and his son did the design and the painting of the basketball court in Sparks High School. Now, they took up the floor, but I got a piece of the floor from that, and it's part of their painting that they did with the track and everything. Absolutely changed Sparks High spirit. And it's so nice to have good spirit in a high school. And then, he coached soccer for, ever since the game was invented.[766.73][766.73](laughter) And I, you know, you don't have too many coaches.
And you were there.[773.13][773.13](laughter)
Yeah. Oh, it was after my time. But he coached, I think it's probably over 20 years soccer at Sparks High School. So, to name this field after he and his lovely wife, Ann. And I sat next to Ann's mother at Walmart, and I got a, I could write a whole history book. But they are such lovely people, and Ann was the ideal elementary school secretary. When I'd get a new secretary, I'd send them over, then she'd train them. That's the heart of both of them. They're bigger than this room, and they're outstanding Sparks citizens. So, I've got something, because I, I gotta tell you, there's nobody that supports public education more than the two of them. And so, I got bins that they have in their retirement on the beach.
A beach.
Probably. They're joined by their son, Chris, today, too.
Oh, was he the one that helped you paint?
Yeah, he's the one that did the design.
Does he still do artwork?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he's terrific. A wonderful man. And it looks like they raised a wonderful son.
Thank you.
There you go. Congratulations. Thanks for all of you.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make the motion to approve?
It is my pleasure to move that we name the soccer field after Joe and Ann Gabeika, because they put in a lot of time, they're rooting for their kids, too. All the, how many did you have on the soccer teams?
We're usually sharing around 12.
No, but I mean, you know.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Two, just two. Yeah. Sparks High.[913.43][913.43](music playing) Wants a red rotor? Thanks.
I object to that being in the motion.[926.23][926.23](laughter)
No, I would choose, I want you to.
Do we have a second? Trustee Franklin would like to second the motion, and I think all of us, Joe and Ann, we want to congratulate you on your retirement. Thank you. Hope you'll be able to enjoy it and not have a list of projects this long. I bet he does. I bet he does, but we're so grateful to you, and if you would like to say something, we certainly would welcome that.
I don't know why I'm so nervous. I've been up here 600 times over the last 35 years, but I am really nervous for some reason. But on behalf of Chris and Ann, Annie Earl, she's many names, we'd like to just thank you so much for this. We're truly humbled and honored beyond, beyond words. This is really something special, and I think the part about it, that for me is really important, is the fact that it's the family soccer field, because all of our family's not here anymore. So, it helps memorialize, helps memorialize. Sorry.[1001.13][1001.13](laughter) It helps memorialize those that aren't here, and so, we truly appreciate adding the family to that. So, Sparks High's been a big part of our life for a long, long time, and will continue to be, as is this district, you know. I've been telling people, you know, when I walked, when I decided to walk away, the hardest part about leaving a district like this is that these people, you people, all of us, we're family. I mean, we fight like family, we argue like family, disagree like family, but at the end of the day, we do the right thing. We do the right thing. And I know a lot of people out there that are listening don't believe that, but it's true. And I've been around here a long time, and I've dealt with a lot of superintendents and a lot of boards, and always, they were trying, they always were doing the right thing. So, you know, again, with that, just, I don't, I want to be as brief as I can, because you've already had a long day, and you've got a long day ahead. So, just, you know, from the bottom of our heart, want to thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.[1064.33][1064.33](applause) Do we have any public comment on this item?
One, one thing before you take the vote, I guess, is that I'd like to present to Joe, Ann, and Chris, this is the proclamation that you had, and we had it, everybody signed it, and just to present this to you.
That's very cool. Very cool. Also, do we have public comment, JJ? Before we, is anybody, would anybody in the public like to, like to comment? Oh, Mr. Duran. Not, not, okay, all right, another item. Okay. Thank you so much. Call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously.[1116.13][1116.13](applause) Very cool. Great, great idea. Okay. Hugging is good. We'll, we'll take a break for hugging for a second. That's great. Okay, I hope that's not the last we see of you. We want to see you back here on some things. All right, we'll move on to item 3.02, presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the following as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee: approval of completion of the design of the Arrow Creek Area Middle School contingent upon Washoe County School District receiving the United States Forest Service issuance of final environmental assessment and decision notes for the property located at the northwest corner of Arrow Creek Parkway and Thomas Creek Road. And thank you for being here, not Adam Cersey. Pete and Ms. Zimmerman.
Adam's at the happiest place, I remember.
I know. I heard, he's had his fourth trip to Disneyland this year or something.
Something like that.
Welcome, Tammy.
Thank you. Tammy Zimmerman, Deputy Facilities Management Officer, to present for Adam. The Capital Funding Protection Committee heard this on March 29th for the approval to move through the design after schematic design. There was an amendment from them to actually go through just design development. We will, that's what we're asking for today. We won't actually own the property probably until the first part of July, because we're in the 45-day objection period. And then, after that, we have a 45-day review of the objections, and so, they don't intend to sign that until July. We will still be within the design development phase in July, so we're asking for approval to move forward, just in design development at this point.
Do we have any questions? Were there any questions at the, were there any questions at the Capital Funding Protection Committee that, any issues or concerns that you want to tell us?
I believe it was just that we didn't own the property yet, was the biggest thing, and so, they amended it to just go through design development.
Great. Okay, thank you. Trustee Dr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. My only question, Tammy, is, what can get, can anything get in the way of us, you know, I don't want to spend the money on design if something can get in the way and us not get the property.
The, we did speak to the Forest Service yesterday. There are items, there could be water quality. They don't see that as an issue. They really have been confirming what we believe, that there's nothing that would stand in the way. No design issues can be brought up. It is strictly just that the land is available, and they can give it to the school district, and they believe that it would be a seamless process.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Mr. Duran, you're back up.
All right. I'd like to say to the Arrow Creek community that I do support the Arrow Creek community because Pine Middle School was overcrowding, then near New School. I do know, like, most student Arrow Creek goes to Pine, that far. I do know Polly is overcrowded, too. If we make a, if we build a new middle school at Arrow Creek, that will be overcrowded by Polly and Pine Middle School. Please concern, like, please build the project on, build a new middle school at Arrow Creek by 2020.
Great. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. If there are no other questions or discussion, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Capital Funding Protection Committee for the completion of the design work for the Arrow Creek Area Middle School.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dr. Feimster. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And then, item 3.03, just, as presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the allocation of $9,310,000 of previously unallocated capital funds received from bond premiums associated with previous bond sales to the following: $1,560,000 to the Sumter 2019 B Capital Renewal Program, and $7,750,000 to the 2017-18 E Major Projects Program as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. And once again, not Adam Cersey, Tammy Zimmerman and Pete Etchar.
They're not going to give me any. So, Tammy Zimmerman, Deputy Facilities Management Officer. We took this to, again, to the Capital Funding Protection Committee on March 29th, and this B portion, these are items that have come and risen to the top. They're, one of them is the actual single point of entries that we'd like to move forward with. That's the 800,000. There are some items on here with the North Valley's window leaks that we'd like to move forward, and those are lined out in column B with the cost. And so, that's the 1.5 million. We'd like to start designing those, we're designing them now, and actually constructing them through the school year. And with that, that's the 1.5 million out of the 9.3. I'm gonna let Pete start with the remainder of the 7 million.
So, every time, again, Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer. Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer, every time we go to the Capital Funding Protection Committee for any kind of allocation of funds, we usually use this sheet here, which basically is keeping kind of a running tally of everything that's been approved since WC1's passage. So, on the right side, in the kind of purple, is the running tally. In the middle, in the green, is what we're asking for at this time. So, I'll run through what's in the green today. Tammy just talked about the school repairs, the 1.56 million. Now, this is just, again, part of the 2019 Capital Renewal Program. We'll have more coming. We don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, because once we start authorizing these funds, it starts to clock for us. We want to be able to spend that money within three years. So, the first one, again, is the school repairs, 1.56 million. The second one is for the Wild Creek Area High School, and what we're looking for at this time is basically an authorization of $800,000 to begin the power line design and the actual construction of the relocation. Now, this is broken into several different segments. The actual funding amount is $678,090, but with taxes, fees, contingencies, we're asking for 800,000 at this time. The design is actually $141,450, and then, there's a procurement, actually buying the equipment, $188,000, and then, actually, construction, $348,000. Now, we realize we don't own that property yet, but we feel strongly that, you know, we are well underway in our process of acquiring that land, and we already have money out right now for the design of the school, which is obviously at risk, so this continues that. But to stay on our schedule of being able to open this school in 2022, we want to be able to start that design now. This is to do the actual site plan that was approved by the school district, and actually very highly looked at by the community as the preferred alternative. And to do that alternative, we need to move that transmission line. So, we're really excited about this. It may slow us down a little bit of time, but I think we're gonna be very happy in the long run that we actually have the best site. The next one, and I'll just, is what Tammy talked about Arrow Creek, and you're not seeing anything in green, because that was actually already fully funded. We're just going step by step with that funding, so there's no need for additional allocation of funds. The next one is Spanish Springs, and I'll turn it back over to Tammy.
So, the Spanish Springs Middle School that, or elementary school that you'll see on here that we're asking for design money for, we're asking for design for that, it's gonna be in the Kylie Ranch area, right next to our existing, well, our constructed middle school that we're doing now. And that'll help alleviate Spanish Springs Elementary School, so we'll come off a multi-track, as well as Van Gorder and that. So, that is the area that we see growth, and we need this design for. So, hoping with approval today that we'll be back with a contract from H&amp;K to actually start designing that for an opening of 2020.
So, the next item on the list is actually the site acquisition fund, and we use this for all of our schools. And so, you can see on the right, in the purple 20, a little over 20 million dollars has been allocated. This is how we bought all of the property. Right now, we're asking to replenish that by 4.25 million. Predominantly, what that will be used for is the 2.14 million that we are continuing to do the site improvements for Rio Wrangler, which will be a future elementary school. That property was donated by the Tri Partners? I'm trying to make sure I got that right. I always wanted to say Perry DiLoreto, but it's his company? It's not just him. So, the Tri Partners actually donated that land to us, and we would be doing these off-site improvements regardless, even if the money, even if land hadn't been donated. But we want to be prepared so when we do build the school, we are ready to go, and it makes sense to do those improvements at this time when the rest of the development of that area is being improved. The other thing we're looking for is really 5 million dollars, so that we are prepared to make the final purchase of the Wild Creek property. Now, we're hoping to actually be able to have that parcel map completed, and hopefully be able to, you know, turn over the final money to the county and the RSCBA, hopefully have that completed by August. That is our timeline right now. And then, the last item on here, again, I'll turn it over to Tammy for the grounds building.
So, the grounds building, we came and asked for funding for that after it flooded, the last time we had a flood. And going through the design process and the regulatory permitting process, we came upon some added items with paving and landscaping that are required, as well as we added an extra bay to it to keep up with the growth that we're gonna see in our community with our schools, so that we can service all of those vehicles, lawnmowers, and that. So, we're asking for an additional 500,000, above and beyond what we asked in the allocation previously, as well as what we're going to get from the insurance fund that FEMA had, that we got from the actual flood for that. So, that's why we're asking for the additional 500,000 for the grounds building.
So, the total of all that is 9.31 million dollars. This is a recommendation from the Capital Funding Protection Committee. And just to be clear, this is money coming from unallocated funds from a previous bond sale. We actually received approximately available to us 13,403,033. That was from the 200 million dollar issuance from the WC1 sales tax revenues that is actually paying for building these new schools. We received that bond premium. So, right now, we're looking at allocating 9.31 million of that, which roughly will leave us about 4 million. us about $4 million of this bond premium. We'll be back in the future to allocate that. Again, we don't want to start the clock really on running on trying to get this money spent. With that, be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great. I don't know if you all heard the conversation about adding internal audit function to our construction funding, but that would be something we're going to be looking to the Capital Funding Protection Committee to review and potentially consider. So I just wanted to add that note on Capital Funding Protection Committee. Are there, is there discussion? Are there any comments, questions? Trustee Raymond?
Thank you, both. I just wondered if there's a timeframe, I know it was on some of the original documents about the core schools investment, but if that is still on track or if there's any movement there. I think the more we build new schools, kind of the bigger the disparity looks between some of those core schools. And, and I think we're also seeing a lot of growth in, in that area of town as well in the core part of town.
Yeah, that, again, Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer, that's, that's a great question. And, you know, we do have funds allocated for that core school investment. And it's one that we all are very passionate about because we do want to have, make sure that, like you said, the disparity between our schools is at an absolute minimum, that every child has that same educational and opportunities in the classroom, that they look similar. So we wanted to get through the process of designing our new elementaries and middle schools and high schools so we know that we have that basis of what we want everything to look like. It's really almost right now, to be honest with you, a staffing issue. I mean, we are so committed to trying to get these schools built and so many projects going on. And even going through the purchasing department of getting contractors and getting consultants on board has been, it's just tough because we have so much work going on. So we are very passionate about wanting to get started on that as soon as possible. What we're looking at right now is, we actually did have an authorization of money, and I think it was $500,000, that was given to us to start doing that analysis. What we're going to be asking for right up front, because we feel that we really want to get started on the McQueen High School. And one of the reasons for that is, we all know, I mean, every time we saw, I think a WC1 thing came in the mail and you saw it, what was on the cover of it? The portables at McQueen. We realize they're the oldest portables in this district. We've been utilizing them way too long. And so what we'd like to, and we're going to take forward to the Capital Funding Protection Committee for a recommendation, hopefully to come to you, would be to start the process very soon to look at possibly doing some kind of expansion onto McQueen High School. It's going to be a difficult site to do because of the very limited acreage we have and the very steep slopes, but we have some ideas. And so we would like to have a planning and architectural group really look at that to see what the options are. And then so we can hopefully get rid of those portables. And also that will expand our high schools to give us capacity as we work toward building future high schools. So right now, our plan is to try to utilize that money toward that McQueen High School. And then we'll go after further to do the planning as soon as we can, as soon as we have the capacity to get past these initial schools. The good news is, I really feel that once these schools that are underway right now get completed, and we include Arrow Creek in that and the high school at Wild Creek, that we will really almost be caught up with what I would call the severe overcrowding schools. We have a couple more elementary schools to go through, you know, to add to that. But then we'll be very growth dependent. And really, we'll be going, building schools wherever growth tells us we should. And so we're excited about that. So the next several years, obviously, are going to be extremely busy. And Adam and Tammy are going to be very busy building schools. But I'm hoping that here in the, you know, the next four or five years, that we really will be caught up and we can really put a lot of our energy, and before that, into that core school investment, making sure all of our schools get to that same standard. It's a long answer, but...
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay. Well, then we would entertain a motion. Thank you, Angie. You've been stepping up today. You get the motion maker award today.
Oh, thank you very much. And I move, excuse me, I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the, wait, wait. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the allocation of $9,310,000 of previously unallocated capital funds received from the bond premiums associated with previous bond sales to the following: $1,560,000 to the summer 2019 B capital renewal program and $7,750,000 to the 2017-2018E major projects program as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Frankel. Is there any further discussion? And I just want to again note that, that the source of these bond sales was the 20, let's see, 2017 C WC1 bonds. And these were general obligation, limited tax, school improvement bonds, not rollover bonds. Just want to make that clear. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. We are now at the items that we would hear after 4 o'clock, and that was perfect timing. Yes, perfect timing. Don't thank me. Dr. Lamarcas, nice to see you. We're at item 3.04, Presentation and Discussion of the Work of the Zoning Advisory Committee, including an overview of the meeting schedule, content reviewed, and actions taken. And what we're going to do is open agenda items 3.04 through 3.16 together because they do interact with one another. So we're going to open all of those items at the same time, but we will vote on them separately. So, Dr. Lamarcas, thank you. And before you get going, I, I know the Board wants to thank and congratulate the members of the zoning committee for their great work. Have we got any members of the zoning committee here today?
Our newest member.
All right, Melissa. Okay. You're just, yes, you're getting a three for today. Okay. Well, we do thank them because we know this has been arduous, hours and hours of commitment, going to different sites, meeting with parents and faculty and staff, and we thank them for that. So take it away, Dr. Lamarcas.
President Simon Hall and Superintendent Davis, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity. For the record, my name is Paul Lamarcas, the Chief Ombudsman and Strategies Officer and Staff Liaison to the Zoning Advisory Committee. And I do want to start by apologizing on behalf of some of the committee members. Our Chairperson, Ms. Birchfield, something happened with work. She couldn't be here today. Several other members were going to try and be here, they couldn't be here. But they have been working very hard on a monthly basis, so I will share your congratulations with them. I'm happy to be here for the next 14 hours to cover the work of the zoning advisory committee. And what better place to start than with Board Policy? So if you could all get out your board, no. So really, I just want to briefly state that the existence of this committee is, it's an extension of you. Okay? And that came from your Board Policy 7105. The committee essentially reports through the Superintendent, and so we have to, everything that we do, we bring to Superintendent Davis to make sure it's feasible, it makes sense. The committee is subject to open meeting laws. I just want you to have a little bit of awareness of the committee and how it operates. We have met on a monthly basis since August, and several of those meetings have been in the communities that are affected. Now, I will say that's in a minority of the communities that have been affected because virtually the builds of the two middle schools in particular are affecting schools throughout, you know, in Sparks. And we can't get to every school, but we invite everyone. So this is a breakdown of the meeting schedule. Our, our next meeting is actually next week, next Thursday, and we will be in here. We won't be at a school, but we will be in here. One of the meetings listed here was on March 19th. That was at Trainer Middle School. That was not actually a zoning advisory committee meeting. That was just an informational meeting put on by District Administration to really walk families through the logistics of these sorts of changes. We had transportation available, other groups, just to talk with families about what they could expect. We know that it is very important to you, very important to us, that we engage families in this process. And that was one of the reasons why we had several of our meetings within communities at schools. This is a picture of a flyer, and we have flyers for the different critical meetings. This flyer was sent home in English and in Spanish to all children in the schools in which significant zoning changes were going to affect where their children might go to school. We also use Connect Ed messages very liberally to announce our meetings. We, we also provide, we have a web presence and we have a zoning email in which we tried to widely publicize that so people could make comment directly to the zoning group, even if they couldn't be at our meetings. Our meetings were very well attended. I know a couple of you were able to come at a couple of different points. Thank you, at the time, President Taylor, for sort of introducing everything. We had strong, or community engagement, at least at, at some of our meetings, which was very nice. One of the first substantive things that the zoning committee did was just to sort of get itself grounded. It was how do we make some of these decisions? And so really, building from what's existing in your policy, the committee came up with some principles or filters through which they would look at any recommended zoning changes. And this is those: student safety, maximizing educational equity and student achievement, maintaining and keeping operational or existing school buildings, minimizing disruption to families was key for us, ensuring our diverse student population has equitable access to schools, and an attempt to maintain zone changes for a minimum of five years. The committee, I will say, was very cognizant that that might not be possible with huge, you know, population shifts and changes. But we do want to avoid ever creating zoning changes that will affect a child twice at the same level. So like twice at the elementary level. Some of what the staff was privy to, obviously, we were taken through open meeting law and some of the rules around that. We received a legal brief regarding the use of demographic data in some of our decision making. We just, we looked at a ton of information regarding enrollment projections and how those are created. And there's a lot of uncertainty out in the field about how we come up with enrollment projections. It's probably been our most consistent question. And I should state that Mr. Baxley is here, and I think Ms. Zimmerman might still be here in case we have some questions that I'm unable to answer. And then we were given substantive zone boundary presentations, really delivered by Adam Cersei, developed by Randy Baxley. And, and you're going to see much of what the committee saw in, in the first couple of meetings. And really what we did there is we talk, we showed maps, we showed the changes, and we looked at the impact data. We obviously allowed public comment at the beginning of meetings, end of meetings, and at any, any point during our meetings. And we received lots of public comment as we went through this. The purview of the committee is to provide for you recommendations regarding zone boundary changes. It's ultimately your authority if any of these changes that you'll see occur. It's not the purview of the committee to make recommendations or changes regarding, for example, grade configurations, moving sixth grades at the middle school level. That's something administration does. Program changes, where programs exist and may impact enrollment, that's not within the purview of the committee. I bring that to your attention because it's an important distinction, but also you need to know that in making some of the recommendations, the committee had to assume some of the changes administration is making, such as moving sixth grade to the middle school level to increase space at the elementary level to allow certain changes to occur. So they were dependent on those kinds of, of actions, and they saw the impact of those actions, but they didn't make those recommendations. In December, so we had our first substantive meeting. I mean, really, what we talked, we were in the community and we were talking about changes. In November, we were supposed to be at Trainer. We ended up being at Lemelson because of a gastrointestinal outbreak at Trainer. In, in December, the committee took its first formal action to accept a recommendation. You'll see that'll be our first recommendation. In December, we were at Sparks Middle School and we sort of received the rest of the presentation. What you're going to find is that the, the middle school that was built in Sun Valley really created changes stemming all the way potentially to Verdi. We're not there with Verdi yet. And then all the way out to Moss and everything in between. And, and so we kind of broke down the committee's discussions into what happened at Trainer and what are the changes that are associated with that. That was the first substantive meeting. You'll hear those tonight. Then what happened at Sparks Middle School and sort of the things that stemmed from Sparks Middle School, and you'll hear those as well. We, we, we will, next week, hopefully, be making recommendations regarding changes out in the South Meadows associated with the new elementary school. And we may revisit some, some lingering discussions around Verdi Elementary. And once those are made, well, we also had a presentation out at Sepulveda Elementary School. We'll bring that to you next month with a whole bunch of recommendations about the new middle school in, in the Spanish Springs area and how that affects all those elementary schools. Okay. So that's kind of a general overview of the committee. I can go ahead and walk through the presentations unless you have any question just you want to ask now.
Trustees, any questions now? I just, looking through the, the materials, I am just absolutely in awe of the work that the zoning committee has done. Absolutely in awe. I don't think any zoning committee anywhere has had to do more than this zoning committee at this time because of all the changes in our, in our construction program. So, yes, walk us through. And, and I would, I would just say, JJ, if we have public comment at any time, you know, we're not going to restrict it to any particular item. So if you would like to make your public comment, Mr. Duran, and if there, if there's any other public comment out there, we'll take it whenever it comes.
Well, it's a very, I do, I say like, great job for the zoning community members to work so hard. I, I know it's very difficult for the family, like you had to like rezone all things. So first, you know, like, I do know like Sun Valley between like, I do know Sun Valley turned feet into Trainer Spark Middle School, but the new school was built, they're like a rezone from Sun Valley to Desert Sky. And then Trainer and Sparks Middle School had to repopulate. And say it's very difficult.
Yep.
I know, I know you, I know like you have very difficult, like rezoning from Creighton Pine to Mellow Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duran. Okay. Dr. Lamarcas. Yes, Trustee Dr. Feimster?
Yes, Madam President. I just, Dr. Lamarcas, I was wondering, I may have missed it because I'm not feeling well. Doctor, I mean, this guy gave me a cold.
Doctor Mayor.
Doctor Mayor gave me a cold. Are we looking at putting specialized programs at Sparks Middle School, Trainer Middle School to have maybe a nice draw for some students? And I'll give you an example. At once, there was the pre IB program at Trainer Middle School. And suddenly Trainer became like overpopulated because people really liked the program and it was, it was excellent. And then students went, they were allowed to skip seventh grade and go straight into eighth grade and then on to Worcester. An excellent program. It did so much for the school. And I'm wondering, are we looking at some type of, I don't know, catalyst of a program that would draw? And I think this is where Malino was going with that. Did you mention that the schools would, the populations would kind of?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like we're drawing away from the population of some of our middle schools.
Member Feimster, I think I can answer your question quickly, but maybe not satisfactorily. This, that's not the purview of the zoning advisory committee. There have been some discussions, especially, and we'll get there. Drake Elementary with some of the changes. The enrollment will decrease to such a level that it provo- The enrollment will decrease to such a level that it provides administration opportunities to look at some programming that might attract different, um, populations into Drake. And, and, but those are, those are administrative choices, so we did not. So, for example, we didn't do things like, say, if we take this program out, we can then put this many kids in, because we're not responsible for taking programs in or out. Um, now, as we did, when we did the middle school specifications and the board approved those, there was an administrative move to take sixth grade when we can and move that up to the middle school. So that's something that the committee discussed, but we didn't say yes or no. We just knew whether that was happening and then whether or not it created space. So I think your questions are really good one, but it's not for the zoning advisory committee.
Right, okay, I, I truly understand that, but when you're looking at numbers, um, I'm, I'm, numbers are critical, because it seems like some of these schools might drop to, um, very low numbers.
We will go through the numbers.
Okay, today?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. And, um, one more question. I was wondering, at, at Trainer, how many parents actually showed up to the meeting?
So, the Trainer meeting wasn't a zoning advisory committee meeting. That was an informational meeting. That night, there was probably, I would guess, a hundred people there at least, but I will tell you that that was families from all over the Truckee Meadows. We had families from, that are affected by the changes with Puliquitas Elementary School. We had families from Verdi. We had families all over the area that were at that particular meeting. At the Lemelson meeting, um, we, we originally had a meeting planned for Trainer, but we had it at Lemelson. There was, I would, I'm guessing, but there was approximately forty families, um, yeah. And that would have been primarily Sun Valley families, um, because that was sort of the, you know, we were talking about the Sun Valley Middle School, um, some Lemelson families, but also some families from Verdi were at that meeting, as I recall.
And thank you, Paul, for sharing that that, that's out of the purview of zoning. Remember, we had discussions, we are currently now researching magnet school opportunities for students in those populations where the numbers go low, and I think our next meeting, the team goes out to Chicago next month. So we're actually researching options already to provide, um, some different things for kids.
Okay, all right. And, and that's where I was going, because I, I mean, I could see this, um, big hole opening up. Okay, so who, who's the "we"?
So first of all, David can come up. So the team went out, first of all, Magnet Schools of America, there's a process in which you can be identified as a magnet school. Once we get that research and see, because there's sometimes, there's a grant, matching funds, make sure we can afford it, then we'll put teams in the schools together to determine what the actual programming is. We're not gonna say, hey, Drake, you should do this, but what we wanna make sure is there's some vertical alignment as we look at our CTEs as they go on to like Sparks. So perhaps it might be a coding stemming school at Drake as they go through Sparks, as they go, right, like, what the articulation looks like. But we didn't decide on the programming specifically yet, because part of that has to go through the research and grant funding and all the pieces. And once we get to that level, we will include principals, the school, like, that's more of a discussion of the people doing the work. The baseline for us is, can we actually do it? Like, we gotta make sure we can afford it, too.
Okay. Uh, I, I just wanna guarantee that parents and students are also included, because I think that's so important. So, that's all. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Lamarcas, then why don't you go ahead and, uh, go into those presentations about the various changes?
Okay, will do. Um, and, and I'm gonna skip over the, the approvals for now, because we're gonna come back to that. Um, and I'm gonna go straight to the map, and I'm gonna need to orient you to this first map, just so that you understand what we're looking at. Um, okay, our pointer doesn't work very good. So when you look at the map, when you see the, the dark blue lines that kind of go around a neighborhood, those are a boundary for a particular elementary school, okay? I really need a pointer.
Moving the pointer?
Um, I'll do it.
Because then you won't be on the mic.
Plus, you'll just be, it'll be so beautiful to have you talented, yes.
Thank you, JJ. You're doing that just incredibly well.
Vanna, yes.
So you see the blue outline, those are all elementary schools that are encaptured by those blue outlines. Where you see the color, so like, you, you see this like lime green, those are all the schools that are currently zoned for Trainer. When you look at the sort of orange or kind of orangish color, those are all the schools that are zoned for Sparks Middle School. So the colors, the broad colors across land, that's middle schools, and the blue lines are elementary schools. So what you see right here is in the, uh, Sun Valley area, so at the sort of top half of the map, you see Allen and Bennett, and you see Sun Valley Elementary School, and you see Palmer Elementary School. Right now, they're split. You have Allen and a good portion of Bennett that go to Trainer. Few Allen kids also go to Sparks Middle School. Then you have Sun Valley Elementary School, and you have Palmer, uh, Elementary School, uh, primarily going to Sparks Middle School.
Clayton?
No, not to Clayton. Um, so Clayton is over here in the blue, so you see the, the blue area where Lemelson, Peavine, um...
In the corner, in the corner, in the left corner.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. So when I just clicked on that, so as you, as you know, we're building Desert Skies Middle School in Sun Valley. So it makes absolute sense for all the kids that are attending elementary schools in the Sun Valley area to go to the new middle school. All right? So that's depicted by this change. So now you see this purple color covering, uh, Sun Valley. So there's no recommended changes to the boundaries affecting the four elementary schools, but all those schools would now go to the new middle school, which effectively changes the boundary for Sparks Middle School and for Trainer Middle School.
So Lemelson? Lemelson?
Um, President, if I may? So, so Lemelson, Tolls, Peavine, Clayton, and Warner, all of those schools down there in that corner in the blue, God bless you, are, will be going to Sun Valley?
No, they're going to Clayton, and we're not talking about Clayton.
Okay, so that one, they're still going to Clayton?
Right.
Okay, so who on here is going to Sun Valley? Sorry.
So, so, okay, let me go back again real quick. So watch where the color changes.
Okay.
So you see the two, uh, just the four schools up in the elementary area, you got a lime green and an orange, and now they're all purple.
Yep.
So those four schools would now go to Desert Skies.
Gotcha.
But what you also see now is that the orange area is much smaller, and the lime green area is much smaller. So in other words, the boundary around Trainer is much smaller, and the boundary around Sparks Middle School is much smaller. So that creates an opportunity for the school district, and that's part of what we're going to talk about, because we need to utilize those buildings. So that's why the building of that school in Sun Valley actually has far-reaching effects all the way out to Verdi, potentially all the way out to Moss, okay? Um, so this first recommendation, well, let me actually slow down and go to the data. So here's the data. Uh, what you have in the top table are the enrollment projections prior to a change, okay? So you see under 2019 and 20, and let me pre- make another prefatory comment. All the changes we're talking about are for the 2019-20 school year. All the recommendations would go into effect that year, so not the next school year, but the year after that. So if you look at 2019-20 on the top table, uh, for example, you see Allen Elementary School at ninety-eight percent capacity. You see Palmer at ninety-five percent capacity, Sun Valley at a hundred and one percent capacity. Then after this proposed change, you see that those capacities change. So Allen would be at eighty-five percent, Palmer would be at eighty-two percent. It's, it's amazing I can see that from this distance, but I can't see it when it's six inches in front of my face. That's the gift of getting old. Um, so you're probably, yeah, you're probably asking, how can that be? It's because the sixth grade students at each of those four elementary schools will now be going to the middle school in Sun Valley. Perfect, thank you very much. Um, but it doesn't work on the screen. The, did it? Okay, so the sixth graders, yeah. And when you point it right at the screen, I'm promising you, it doesn't work.
It just, oh.
Yeah, it goes up there, but it doesn't go on the screen. The screen reflects it. Okay, so the, the change in enrollment is because the elementary schools would no longer serve sixth grade, okay? But you also see that the new middle school will start at seventy-seven percent capacity. Trainer Middle School, which is at ninety-seven percent capacity, goes down to seventy-nine percent capacity with this change, okay? So that's kind of, this is sort of the rotation of information that the committee went up against. And then we would ask for public comment, if there's any public comment that, that was sort of associated with a particular change, all right? Wait till action item, like, five through fifteen? Yeah, no. Okay, so, does, does that orientation help? Because, and I'll go as slowly as we can and, and as you want me to go. Oh, um, yeah, Sun Valley is at one hundred and one percent right now, and Sun Valley would be down to eighty-four percent, okay? And you should have all this data in front of you, okay? No, I know, in case you wanna look at it later. All right. Um, oh, so we do, we have the good, we have the old presentation out. Good, all right, so the, okay. So now what we're gonna talk about is a change that affects Clayton Middle School and Trainer Middle School, all right? And really what the change would be is taking kids that currently are at Lemelson, all the kids currently at Lemelson, who matriculate to Clayton, and move them to Trainer, okay? And this is an important move. I, I tend to agree with you, and here's why. One of the triggers, or one of the things that we're trying to fix with these opportunities is what we would call split feeder patterns. And, and this isn't, this isn't really a split feeder, so off, a, a split feeder might be that this elementary school goes in two directions. So remember when Bennett was going both to Sparks and Trainer? By having Bennett go to Desert Skies, we eliminate that split feeder. With Lemelson, they're interesting, because Lemelson goes from where Lemelson is to Clayton and then to Hug. All the other kids that go to Hug come through Trainer, okay? So it's sort of a different split, so to speak. So that was part of what the zoning advisory committee was trying to do, is where it could eliminate, and this we would see as minimizing the impact to families. By maximizing the communication we can have vertically with families, all right? Um, so, here again, we have the existing pattern, and, and in sort of the upper left-hand region in that blue, you see all the elementary schools that are feeding into Clayton. And right next to the green, uh, you see Lemelson. So you, you see where UNR is, right in the center of the map, and you see Lemelson right next to it, okay? So this change would simply take Lemelson out of the Clayton zone and put it into the, uh, Trainer Middle School zone. All right?
That's great, because some of those kids are on the rodeo grounds. They gotta walk down Wells Avenue and Ketchup, that road, Dakota Valley Road, and then they gotta go up there. This would make it an easier walk for those kids.
Absolutely. Um, so here you have, again, you have the impact data. So when you look at Lemelson right now, they're at eighty-eight percent. Well, there's no change to Lemelson, other than the sixth graders would be going to Trainer now. Uh, but you see Clayton is at ninety percent, Trainer's at seventy-nine percent. So with this change, Clayton goes down to eighty-two percent, Trainer's back up to eighty-eight percent.
Question, um, you know, uh, Clayton is a, a school within a school for, uh, AP classes and stuff. Does that amount show in here?
Yeah, the kids that are part of the GT Magnet are included in these numbers, and that program would not shift out of Clayton, at least not based on the actions or the recommendations of the zoning advisory committee.
That's good, too.
Okay, all right. Um, and then this is Lemelson. When you move the sixth graders out and you see Trainer is now all the way up to ninety-six, so Trainer is pretty maximally used at this point in time. Okay? All right. The next set of, of changes go further west, and they're really around Westergaard, which if you remember, two years ago, was a super hotspot for us. Um, it's one of the schools that, based on our policies, our regulations, could have very definitely triggered to go multi-track, and we, you all decided not to have them do that. But we still have to deal with the, the crowding situation at Westergaard. Um, and, so, let's just look at this. Right here, and, and we're gonna see a couple of different maps that, that show Westergaard changes. This one is Westergaard kids, um, going to Melton. So this whole sort of brown area, that's schools that are feeding into Billingshurst Middle School, but then you see the blue outlines, and you see they're really large zones, because there's a lot of land there that's not populated. Um, you see where Westergaard is, is kind of right in the center, it's that middle kind of big chunk, and then right above it, you see the Melton zone. And then you see a, a white box area proposed for rezoning. So if you keep your eye right there, you're gonna see that there's a, a group of homes that are currently zoned for Westergaard, who would now be zoned for Melton. So you have, you have Melton that's currently at seventy-one percent, you have Westergaard that's projected to be at a hundred and seventeen percent. This would slightly increase Melton's capacity, um, and it would significantly reduce Westergaard's capacity, okay? Uh, Winamucca is included there, because we're gonna get there in a minute, and we're, we're gonna have some subsequent changes. So here again, you have that zoning area, um, and, and you see where Westergaard is, again in the middle, and then to the right of it, uh, you have Winamucca that kind of borders also on the Clayton zone. And you see that white area, or that white box with the arrow. So there's a, some apartments in that that would now go over to Winamucca. And this is also depicting the change above to Melton. Are you seeing that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's apartments that are just north of McCarran Boulevard, or that, that's actually the freeway right there.
Yeah, that's Sherwin's.
Yeah, oops.
It's Parkway.
All right?
They're building.
Right, and, and all the building is built into the projected enrollments, um, to the extent when we know it's occurring, all right? So here again, you have the, the Melton and the Westergaard and the Winamucca numbers with no changes up above, uh, you have the middle section with Melton going to Westergaard, and then at the bottom, uh, or Westergaard going to Melton, I apologize. Now you see that if we were to do both of these changes, which will, you will receive that recommendation, Westergaard's, uh, projection would go below a hundred percent, um, and then, uh, Winamucca would be at eighty-three percent, Melton would be at seventy-nine percent. So, um, one thing that, may I take the privilege of asking your advice? The way we worked on this with the committee was that you have really these two distinct things that are occurring. You have this middle school that's creating changes at Trainer, and then a middle school that's creating changes at Sparks. None of those kind of intersect. So if you want, you could deal with the recommendations around Trainer now, otherwise we're gonna return to, I guess what I'm saying is, everything that you're gonna hear from here on out is not gonna have any relationship to the Westergaard proposed changes, the Lemelson proposed change, or the Sun Valley Elementary School changes.
So we could act on, we could act on, no, I'm getting it, through, uh...
You weren't even on the plane.
Through three point oh eight, is that, we could act on, on those? I, I personally, I would just like to get through the whole thing, but I don't know how everybody else feels. else feels, I just, I think it's great to get the whole picture, even though, as you say, what's coming after three-point-oh-eight won't affect anything before that, but I'm, I'm getting nods that we should keep going, yeah. Trustee Feimster?
Thank you, Neil, that sounds good.
Trustee Feimster has the floor at the moment, sorry, Paul.
Just a, just a comment.
I know, it's been on for an hour.
Yes. Oh, he's up?
I'm up.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, but that's... I know this is great work, very well done, but if I'm a person who's sitting back, looking at the, um, the wholesomeness of this entire thing, what I see is, uh, the antithesis of what Brown versus Board was about, I see that, and maybe I'm the only one who's seeing it, I'm probably more sensitive to it. I, I hope that we can, at least with the Magnet School programs, try to, I would hope that the Magnet School programs would address this resegregation of schools. And if I'm looking at it differently, I've been here a long time, and I know the areas all over, and it just seems like, I know in the past, we've always tried to get the populations in there, so that we could have, you know, diversity in all the schools, as many as possible. And I know sometimes it meant traveling, and it meant, you know, busing here and busing there, but when it was all said and done, parents and students truly appreciated it. Because when you go out into the real world, you do not see, you do not work with, or just monolithic population. I just feel that that piece was missing, but I hope it is addressed through the Magnet programs, and I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
Thank you, trustee mayor.
Yes, you know, back in the ages, when I was at Clayton, we had that problem where it came up, and they had voluntary buses from like Trainer and that, and they went to Grace Warner, Clayton, and Reno High. Do we still do that? Because if you, you ought to look at it, if the balance is so bad, that it equaled the balance, not only from Trainer and those, but Clayton got kids of color, and Reno High got some. Do they still do that?
Mr. Lasik?
Sure, David Lasik, chief of staff for the record. So, two parts to the answer to this question. I will say, under Paul's direction, and under Legals' direction, the zoning committee had a training and a robust discussion from Gina Session about this, and to be careful at looking at minority populations when making these decisions. So these, all of this was in their forefront when making these decisions. Specifically to the Magnet School piece, one of the tenants of the Magnet School program is to look at the minority population and bring in non-minority students to address what you were saying, Dr. Feimster. So, yes, that is being looked at and will be addressed as we go forward in looking at that. And Mr. Mayor, to your question, no, we don't do that anymore.
Cause, uh, up till two thousand, I knew it was still going, so maybe two thousand, it didn't happen anymore.
Yeah, to my, I mean, in the last five years, we haven't been doing it, I don't know about prior to that.
Yeah, cause I had some wonderful kids from there, in fact, I'd take them home and stuff, and they were wonderful. And the thing was, their parents made sure that they got there and that they studied, and so it was good for everybody.
Yeah, as part of the Magnet School grant requirements, we are required, and if we were required to do exactly what you just said, Dr. Feimster. So, part of the cost and what the grant affords is transportation to bring in kids into those areas, that's, and it's expensive to do that, but that's why we go out for the funding to help pay for that.
Just, and I agree, it's expensive, but, you know, when you look at what Thurgood Marshall went through, I, his words were, you know, "With all due speed," or however, "with all due speed, we need to do this." And many cities did it, just with all due speed. It worked, it worked. I remember when Spanish Springs, the middle school, had to come to Trainer, there was a lot of flak around it. I gotta tell you, every student who went there from Spanish Springs, they were so pleased. I mean, it was, they gave testimony after testimony, it was the most beautiful experience they have ever had. The president of the school, Tammy, she cried in front of the school board, she just said, "I was one of the main ones, not wanting to go to Trainer, because, oh, it was a long bus ride." She spoke about all the things she gained, you know, the, on the bus ride from Spanish Springs to Trainer and back, and, but she also had the opportunity to be president of her school, you know, imagine, it was just so beautiful. We wanted this to happen, and it did, and I just, I just want us to try to get the schools to be as mixed as possible, even though we don't have the populations, you know, the explosions of populations that we would need to do that. I gotta tell you, it helps, because when you go in the real world, you've gotta know how to get along with all people. And I, and I, so I so hope that the Magnet program addresses that. And in a case like this, cost truly should not be, it's important, but it's not the greatest issue. The greatest issue is getting to know others of different cultures, so that when you are in that real world, you're prepared, you're prepared for it, because it's so important. And I just hope we have some people on that committee that can look at having that population diverse. It is important, it is 2018.
Shall I proceed?
Yep. And thank you, trustee Feimster, cause it's a great reminder, an important reminder.
Okay, so, so now, we're gonna talk really about the space that was provided at Sparks Middle School by creating Desert Skies, and now how that's going to sort of stem out and affect all the way over to Mendive and Moss and those areas, alright? There is some interconnection with these changes, with the changes out in Spanish Springs as well, we may comment on that. I will tell you that the changes on sort of this side of the equation in Sparks, they are far more dependent. You gotta kinda do one, and then do the next, then do the next. If you sort of pick and choose, it sort of all tears apart. So that's something to be aware of, and if that becomes a real issue, Randy may need to come up and help describe that a little bit better. So, here, this first change that we're talking about is really affecting the Dilworth boundary and the Sparks Middle School boundary. And this is accomplished by taking the Kate Smith Elementary School kids, who currently matriculate to Dilworth, and the Mitchell Elementary School kids that currently matriculate to Dilworth Middle School, sorry, and having those kids now matriculate to Sparks Middle School.
So all of those...
Wait for it.
Yeah, John, let's look at the map, and then your question will be super relevant. So right now, this is the existing, so you see that blue area, that's down on the sort of middle bottom, and then over to the east of the city. That's all Dilworth. And then you see Kate Smith, and you see Mitchell, which are west of Pyramid Highway. And, and so what this proposal does, and there's a part of Mitchell that also, we call it the Mitchell boot, that actually is below the freeway and goes both east and west of Pyramid.
Lithium Motors has a lot of kids.
Well, we'll, let's, we'll get at that. So this proposal would take those kids that go to Kate Smith and Mitchell and move them to Sparks Middle School, okay? You see that?
So, kids at Mitchell will go to Sparks Middle.
Right.
When they could walk to Dilworth.
Across Pyramid.
Yeah, but if they go, walk to Sparks Middle, they'll cross Audi and, uh...
Rock.
Rock.
Right. The majority of those kids would probably be, I don't know, Rick is not here, but a lot of those kids would end up being bused, and have, or have bus transportation.
Yeah.
It depends on the, the distance.
The bus for the sixth graders isn't working, they're walking instead.
Okay, but so that, so that's an important point. That's, that's the recommendation, though, that we take those kids that currently go to Dilworth, and we move them over to Sparks Middle School, okay? If you look at the, the impact data, so you have Dilworth at eighty-four percent prior to this change, Sparks Middle School at fifty-five percent capacity, and that changes, and it essentially flip-flops that. Now you have Dilworth at fifty-one, Sparks at eighty-three. But as President said, you have to wait for it, cause there's a, sort of a additional changes.
There's another one coming, huh?
There's a whole bunch of them that come, and we will fill Dilworth.
I'm not worried about filling Dilworth, I'm worried about my neighborhood going to Sparks Middle when you got Drake right here.
Okay, okay, well, and then that, then, great, and that's, you guys ultimately get to do this, so let me, let me keep walking. Here, this is a very minor change, remember that boot that we talked about? So what this proposal does is it takes the kids, and I believe the last time Randy counted, there was one kid.
Yeah.
That live in that, that brown section, that's sort of below the freeway, it's in the Mitchell zone. And we take, we take, so we're changing the Mitchell boundary, and we're changing that to Hidden Valley Elementary School. And we're taking, it also right now is the Dilworth boundary, right? And we're moving that, or it's actually Sparks Boundary, but currently it's Dilworth, and we're moving that to Vaughn. And there'd be transportation there, but we're, we're talking about an impact of one child.
Yeah, and, and they, Hidden Valley gets the colony, so they could go on that bus.
That's true, and there's also variance options that might allow this child to stay closer if they wanted.
Trustee Frankel?
Just a question, so if there's only one child involved in the boot, to use your language, what was the thinking of the, of the committee around doing that? Were they anticipating that in the future, we could see growth in that area, that would make more sense for that area to be Hidden Valley? I guess that's the question.
I really think it was primarily designed, so let's look at the picture, to just clean up and, and make it as sort of clean as possible. And you do have sort of freeway there that splits that off, and we do try not to go across freeways, or we try to use major arterials to make distinctions, but yeah, the impact is very minimal in this particular change. This is one where the other changes aren't dependent upon it, but it is general cleanup. We don't even show any impact data with this, cause it was literally one child. Okay, the next set is, this is approval of the recommendation, modify the zoning boundaries of Kate Smith, Mitchell Elementary, Rizley Elementary, moving segments of students who attend Kate Smith and Mitchell to Rizley. Okay, so John, this is another one in your neighborhood.
Yeah, so far, you're not making me happy.
I'll share that with the zoning advisory committee, I'm a non-voting member. So again, here now, this is depicting temporarily the change where Kate Smith and Mitchell go to Sparks Middle School now, okay? Just so you have the color scheme down. So everything, we're, we're focusing in right now on the brown portion, you see the boundary for Kate Smith, and you see the boundary for Mitchell Elementary School, and then up above, in the left kind of quadrant of the brown, you see Rizley Elementary School's zone, okay? So, and this is a, this just makes it larger, so that you can see the picture a little bit more clearly. Again, at the bottom left, you have Kate Smith, bottom right, you have Mitchell, and then up above on the left, you have Rizley Elementary. So the changes are there. I wish I had a pointer. So let's just look at Kate Smith first. So Kate Smith, you've got this change that's running around along Sullivan, and then goes below these, it looks like Jessie Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay? And then if you look over at Mitchell, you see that section of Mitchell that kinda crosses over into what seems like it would be the Kate Smith Boundary, but it's not. And it goes right there where, you know, where Rock kinda has that interesting little twist over in that neighborhood. So it cleans up those boundaries, and when I say that, I mean it, because you have to remember, too, when we were doing the multi-track, where Kate Smith is a school that triggers multi-track, it just doesn't have the capacity to do it. So we have to work on Kate Smith, and this, this was the proposal in order to do that. So if you look at the top table, you see that walking into this with no change, you have Rizley Elementary at sixty-four percent capacity, you've got Mitchell just tipping over a hundred percent, but you've got Kate Smith at a hundred-and-twenty-two percent. And again, the trigger for multi-track is a hundred-and-twenty, but it's a building that really can't, you can't really do our four-track model at that building. So with these changes, you'd now build Rizley up to ninety-one percent, you'd have Mitchell at eighty-one percent, and you'd bring Kate Smith below a hundred percent. So it brings some equity in terms of enrollment, or equality in terms of enrollment to these three schools. We did, this is one in which there was some comment, and Randy, I believe, worked with the principal at Kate Smith, to really kind of hone in on that boundary change for Kate Smith, that would make a little bit more sense. We originally had it a little bit higher up, and it kinda went down an alley, but she really felt like it was breaking up a pretty tight neighborhood, and at least in her opinion at that time, and there was a public discussion of it, this was a better option than the one that was originally presented to them. Okay. Here, we're looking at Juniper Elementary School and Maxwell Elementary School, and we're trying to make a change, Juniper is, got a lot of kids, and let me just move right into it. This is also one of those kind of split feeders like Lemelson. If you look, this is an interesting map, so again, the blue area, that's Dilworth, the brown-orange area, that's Sparks Middle School, the yellow area, that's Mendive Middle School. If you see Juniper, that's kind of in the upper right-hand quadrant, but you gotta follow its blue dark boundary, you see that about a third of its population goes to Sparks Middle School, while about two-thirds of its population, at least based on the geographical breakdown, goes to Mendive. So we have kids that are in school together, forming relationships, some go to Mendive, some go to Sparks Middle School. And we have Juniper, which is over capacity. So the recommendation here... So the recommendation here is to take that Juniper line and move it from where it currently is over there. I believe that's Sullivan? No, it's, it's, it's east of Sullivan, but it's Whittaker. And moving it over to Pyramid Highway. So that all the kids that are west of Pyramid Highway and north of McCarran Boulevard that had gone to Juniper would now go to Sparks Middle School. Sure. So it, it kind of uses Pyramid as that major artery that separates that boundary. Those kids, again, already go to Sparks Middle School. So now what happens, and, and sorry, I'm not being clear. So the other thing we have to look at is Maxwell Elementary. So in this first picture, Maxwell Elementary's boundary ends at McCarran.
The upper one.
Yeah. And so what this does is, it takes those kids that are, are west of Pyramid and north of McCarran that currently attend Juniper and, and now has them attend Maxwell Elementary School.
Yeah, isn't that one, um, up there that they get a choice? They can go to either Juniper or else Maxwell?
No.
They all, now presently, they all go to Juniper?
They're all zoned for Juniper. I will tell you, and that was part of how I would have responded to your question. We have variances in and out of every building. Now, I can't tell you right now exactly how many kids that live in that region currently variance to Maxwell, or vice versa. But right now, all those kids are zoned for Juniper, but they would now be zoned for Maxwell. And part of what that does is it cleans up that Sparks Middle School zone so that you don't have that split feeder where you have kids going to both Mendive and to Sparks from the same elementary.
Yeah, but you got kids up on Whittaker Hill and, and there. They gotta go all the way down, then they go across McCarran at that new intersection.
They do, but they do that for middle school now anyways. So you're right, at the elementary level, that's the change that we're talking about, is we've got that McCarran divide.
Is that very different than crossing Pyramid? I'm not familiar with that area.
It's worse, because that's the busiest intersection in Chucky Meadows Valley. Pyramid and McCarran.
The one that was just improved?
It's, they just redid it and it's already backed up all the way to Victorian Avenue to get to Spanish Springs.
Right. He's not here to comment, but this is the type of thing that I believe Mr. Martin was, was discussing earlier in response to the budget item, where when there is a significant safety concern, like crossing that sort of an intersection, busing is provided.
But, I'll tell you, they have to make it mandatory. Because when I taught at Lena Juniper, some of the parents, and it was Maxwell was across Pyramid, they'd let her, they'd, they'd get a variance and their kids would walk. You know, so you have to take the bus, they should say. Because it's, this, I don't know, I hated it. I hate to even cross that intersection.
Right, well, and, and with full respect, John, and I'm not questioning you, because you're right. And that was the biggest concern of the committee is that, that kind of a scenario. But right now, the reality is those kids are crossing either that same intersection to get to Juniper, or they're crossing up at, um, you know where they've made that?
Queen's Way.
Yeah, Queen's Way.
But that's a lot easier to cross than McCarran and Pyramid.
Yeah, but in the morning, it's the same traffic, right? I mean, it's the...
I don't know, that, those people that live out in Sun Valley, I mean, in Spanish Springs, it's a steady traffic from twenty-four hours.
Right, exactly. I've driven it for ten...
Yeah.
I just said ten, I should have said twenty-five years, yeah.
And they don't go like I drive, go grandfather.
No, it's like a highway.
Oh, it's tough.
But, but so that is the recommendation, okay? That's the recommendation with Juniper. What it does is you have Juniper currently projected at a hundred and one percent in the nineteen-twenty school year. This would drop them to ninety-three percent. You've got Maxwell at eighty-one. It would increase Maxwell to eighty-seven. You have Sparks Middle School at eighty-three, and there's not really a change there, okay? The change is sixth grade. Yeah. The reason why I say there's not really a change there is that those kids already go to Sparks Middle School. Okay. This one is an interesting one. This is one affectionately referred to as the Dunn Notch. And this one has a lot of history in the school district. Predates me. Essentially, what we would be doing here is we would be changing the boundaries for Dunn Elementary School and Mendive Middle, uh, Middle School, as well as Dilworth Middle School and Moss Elementary School. Okay? And you'll see why. So again, the big blue area is Dilworth. The yellow area is Mendive. You see where Dunn is right smack in the middle, and you see the, the blue border, and you see that yellow kind of area that kind of gets into that, that, um, neighborhood that is just west of Sparks Boulevard. Okay, and just north of, uh, Prater. And, and so, well, here is the idea. The idea is that we would take all those kids that are currently attending Moss in that little notch.
Yeah.
And we would move them to Dunn. Dunn already goes to Dilworth. And those kids that are, that go to Moss, some of them go, no, they currently go to Mendive. But by making this change, what we would do is we would take all Dunn kids and move them to Dilworth, and Moss would continue to go to Mendive.
So that, that little notch, as you call it, like expressway in all those houses, instead of going past DeGrickson, past Mendive to Moss, going past Dunn, they go to Dunn.
Right. Right, and then you do see...
That's a good one.
Yeah, and you do see that actually, and that's what I was getting hung up on. Dunn right now is in a split feeder situation.
Yeah.
So you see that there's just a handful of kids that are attending Dunn. You see it in the, uh, the upper line or arrow above the areas proposed for rezoning. You see how there's no blue boundary around that yellow on the inside? Those are, those are kids that, that go to Dunn, but that go to Mendive. So we would be eliminating that split feeder situation with this.
That's pretty good, that one.
Okay, and so here's the impact data there. You've got Dunn at ninety-two percent, you've got Moss at eighty-seven, uh, Dilworth at sixty-eight. Part of the reason why Dilworth is at sixty-eight, it was lower before, is not shown here, is the, the administrative move to take sixth graders from Drake and Greenbree and move them to Dilworth.
That's not, by the, that's what you're gonna do.
That, well, that's not the...
It's not happening now.
Right, it would happen. Everything would happen in two thousand and nineteen-twenty. But what I'm saying is that's a change that was not, is not being recommended by the zoning advisory committee. It's a change that the zoning advisory committee has been told will occur. It's part of the plan to move sixth grade to middle school. So that's why, because if you remember, Dilworth was down, I think at fifty-one percent or something like that. And it, it's bumped up because of sixth graders going to it.
That's a good move.
All right, so now you look at the change and you have a hundred and one percent at Dunn, and then seventy-eight, seventy-four, but then when you move the sixth graders out of there, then Dunn is at eighty-six percent. Dilworth is all the way up to eighty-five percent. So this one's a little complicated. Let's go back and look at the map real quick. So you get this little section. So we'd be changing sort of the boundaries between Moss and Dunn. And then we would also then therefore be changing the boundaries between Mendive and Dilworth.
Those kids go to Moss and not DeGrickson?
They don't go to DeGrickson now.
Okay.
Question, but, well, you'd have to go back to, you haven't done Lincoln Park yet.
No, we're get, we get there.
So the apartments on Sparks Boulevard are gonna go to Lincoln Park, huh?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Instead of Moss.
Depends on which side of the street we're talking about. Is that on the west side?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so here, we have zone boundary changes of Moss Elementary School and Lincoln Park Elementary School, moving a segment of students who attend Moss to Lincoln Park. So you, you see the blue at the bottom, that big area at the bottom, again, that's Dilworth. You see where Lincoln Park's current boundary is. That's, that's way over by McCarran Boulevard. And then Moss's, um, zone is huge.
Yeah.
It's, it's not highly populated, but it's a huge geographical area. So this change would move Lincoln Park's boundary east all the way to Sparks Boulevard.
And down.
Yeah.
Because there's gonna be some apartments built in there, right behind that nursery.
Are you talking about south of the freeway?
No, no, north.
Okay.
You know where that river, Rock is, or whatever. There's no houses there now, but they're, they got approval for apartments.
Right, so here...
Probably never be built.
Here again is that, that section that would go from Moss to Lincoln Park. And then you've got, those are the changes. Lincoln Park right now, because the sixth grade moving up to Dilworth is at fifty-five percent. With this change, they'd be at seventy-four percent. Moss, that's at seventy-eight percent, would be reduced down to sixty percent. Dilworth has a few more kids as a result. Mendive is unchanged at this point. Actually, there's a slight increase of kids.
You've already gone past Lincoln Park. How much are they going to increase? And is all the apartments that they've, that they're building right now around the Marina and, and north of Marina, there's thousands of them.
It should be part of the projections.
It is. Wow.
When, when it, well, it's trivia, so I'm not gonna share it. Yes, that's actually been the biggest question that community members have had with every change is, have you seen all the growth in Verdi? Have you seen all the growth around Gom? Have you seen all the growth? And the, the answer to that is yes, to the best of our knowledge. Randy works with the university and, and the planners and all the numbers. We have conversion rates, so when we have a certain number of homes going up, we have a conversion rate. We have apartments going up, we have a conversion rate, meaning for every apartment, we have this many additional kids. That sort of a thing. So that's all been baked into these numbers. Is it error-proof? No. And there's always shifts that you can't, you guys know that. Every, every fall, we're stunned when a particular school blows up and another school has lower enrollment. And he does, we do the best we can to make those projections, and there's always some error involved. But this does incorporate all the planned developments. So, um, here's another bound, this is kind of a similar one. Here's a boundary change of Mendive and Dilworth, moving a segment of students from Dilworth to Mendive, which is probably sounding strange, because Mendive is already full. But, and, and I'm just gonna go ahead and beat the punch, and we're not gonna talk about that as a recommendation tonight, because we're gonna bring you all the Spanish Springs stuff later. But part of the recommendation is significant relief for Mendive by taking some kids from Sepulveda and Beasley and moving them to the new middle school in the Spanish Springs area. Okay? So, um, here is the Dilworth Mendive change. So you have all of those kids right now, remember we changed the Lincoln Park and the Moss zones? And so you have, um, let me back up for a minute. Okay. So basically, within that Moss zone, until that change, now we've got a split feeder with Moss. So we have some of the Moss kids that are actually going to Dilworth. That's not a lot. And then we have most of the kids, almost all of the kids, going up to Mendive. So this just simply makes all the Moss kids go to Mendive. All right?
The table I see on the next slide, it must not be the right one, because it says rezone. I think it's from the, that's from the previous one, because Mendive doesn't change. It says one oh two, one oh two, so I think that must be the wrong table. So I'm wondering what the impact is on Mendive of that suggestion. I know it sounds like there's some other things in the works too, but I just wanted to check.
Yeah, it is only showing a four kid change.
If you look at the title of the chart, it doesn't, it's that we're still talking about the Dunn Notch and the Moss ES to Lincoln Park ES. I think that is not the right slide.
Mr. Baxi?
Yeah, that, that one goes down for Mendive.
Yeah, record Randy Baxi, school planner and the, the evil author of this plan. What you see in the, the charts, they're actually, the charts that were part of the previous one, it actually, the charts were actually shown in both of these pieces together. So the previous one was only addressing the elementary schools. So that change only addressed Lincoln Park and Moss part. The subsequent change, we're looking at getting rid of that split zoning for Moss going down through the Truckee Canyon. That's really just reflected in the, the middle school pieces, and there's just a, you know, a very small handful of kids out there. I think it's, looked like four students in that area that would affect. It is very similar to that Mitchell Boot. It was basically a cleanup while we're doing all of these other things. Let's clean this up at the same time.
Right, so those two rows really didn't apply in the previous change. Okay, uh, this is the last one that we have for tonight. And this again is arguably cleanup and arguably dependent on some of the changes that would occur in Spanish Springs as well. So this is modifying the Whitehead Elementary School Boundary. Again, Whitehead is packed and rezoning some kids for Moss Elementary School. So, um, you, you've got the, and it doesn't change the middle school at all, because both Whitehead and Moss matriculate to Mendive at this point. So you see the big yellow region. You see Reed High School right in the middle, and then right above it to the right, really more in the middle, is Whitehead. So you see Whitehead Elementary School. Below Whitehead is DeGrickson, and then to the east of DeGrickson or to the right of DeGrickson is Moss. And you see that area that is, um, for those that are familiar with Vista and the sort of Los Altos area and the DeAndrea Loop area, really just the Los Altos Loop. You got that hill, um, and, and you see that where the arrow is pointing with the, with the area proposed for rezoning. So that's what we would do with Whitehead. We would cut it off and move those kids over to Moss.
And I'm looking at the roads. Is, is there an easy way to get from that neighborhood that's been moved to Moss? It doesn't look like it, I mean...
It's actually pretty close. I mean, you, what you do is you go Vista and you take a left on DeAndrea, and then you're pretty much right there.
Because it seems like a straighter shot to go to Whitehead, but I was just looking at the roads too, okay.
It is an easier to Whitehead.
It is, yeah. But it, but it also, remember Whitehead, so look, look at the numbers. So when we look at Whitehead, their projection, right now they're over a hundred. They're projected to be at a hundred and four percent. to be at 104%. Moss with all the changes we've talked about would be at 60%. This would bring Whitehead down to 81, put Moss at 78. So it brings some equality there. So it creates better utilization of buildings, you know, that's part of the filter that we're walking through.
Now, this includes at Whitehead, I think they got a whole bunch of special ed programs at Whitehead, don't they?
They have the SWAS program, I'm not familiar with any special ed.
That's all they got is SWAS.
I think so. And they're, I believe their design is very similar to Kate Smith's, they're not able to go multi-track at Whitehead.
That's interesting.
So that is the information. What we would ask you to do now is consider each of these in turn, and if you would like, I can go back to the beginning of it and just sort of walk you back through, so that you remember where we're at.
Can I ask a question before we talk about process? So these are, and I apologize if you talked about this and my brain was full, but so what's the impact of the Spanish Springs Middle School on what's going to happen at Mendive? Is that going to help alleviate any of the Mendive?
Yes, and we'll bring that to you in early May. We've already, the committee's already made recommendations, so the committee, from the zoning advisory perspective, that's not going to change. That proposal will be for Beasley Elementary School to go to Desert Skies, or not Desert Skies, I'm sorry, Sky Ranch. And Sepulveda is a very interesting one. Sepulveda splits three ways right now, you've got kids going to Shaw, you have kids going to Mendive, and you have a few kids that actually go to Sparks Middle School. And so Sepulveda would also go entirely to Sky Ranch. So both the Sepulveda and the Beasley, especially Beasley, would significantly reduce population at Mendive.
Okay, because I'm looking at this and seeing Mendive is still...
Yeah.
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 Okay. Okay, so trustees, how do you want to do this? Do you want to have a quick run-through, or I don't know if we can have such a thing as a quick run-through? Just each of these from 3.05 to 3.0, you know, what we just went through. It's up to you all, what would you, what's your pleasure? Because we do need actions on each one of these items. Trustee Mayor, we were just talking about process, Dr. Lamarcus was offering to go through each one of them again, and I stuck ice picks in my eyeballs when he said that. And we have, how about if we take some public comment? That would be a good thing to do.
Is this the final?
We already did the final one.
I mean, is this the final hearing? There's not a big public hearing?
These items are actually listed for possible action. Your, part of your action, I guess, I'd look to counsel, but it could be to not, yeah. And then what we would do in that particular case, to keep you on schedule, because one of our goals, and of course, these are hard decisions, so I, believe me, we all respect the hard work we have. But it is to be able to announce to families as early as possible the changes. We also will have some changes with the zoning advisory committee at the end of June, just because of the rules, but I don't think that's an issue. So our plan is to bring these to you tonight, you take action or you don't. If you don't, we would bring these same items to you later this month. Then in May, we would bring you the Sun Valley and the South Meadows changes. And then you'd have the same situation where if you decided you didn't take action, the first time, we'd come back two weeks later.
And we could also bifurcate the west and the east zoning changes.
Absolutely.
So the 3.05 through 3.08, we could choose to take those and then defer others, so there's all those options. And we do have some public comment, can we take the public comment first?
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I just, I just, I can't. For 30 years, they've had to hold in a big auditorium at Brown Elementary School when they were rezoning Pleasant Valley and that. I mean, there were so many people, they were parked all the way down to Geiger Grade. I've never seen such a little group of interested private citizens.
Well, we did have a great public process, I mean, the list of public meetings that they had, the zoning committee met out in the, you know, in the geography and the neighborhoods, and we did post this for being after 4 o'clock, so that we could make it easier for people who work during the day to be here.
Have you ever seen this, of a zoning change even for city? I've never seen it that way.
Super emotional, I will tell you that we did what we could in terms of getting families to come to the meetings, we had a lot of participation. And I will tell you that really with the Sun Valley changes, outside of the Verdai area, which we're still working on, there wasn't a lot of controversy, there was not a lot of comment, which I was a little surprised by. And we have a little bit of discussion still ahead of us in terms of Puliquitas. There's some changes down there, where we've got a major arterial that's affecting people's opinions. But, yeah, we have not seen, John, what we've seen traditionally.
I think part of some of that too, Mr. Mayor, is just that we're building bright, shiny new schools, and, you know, it's not seen as a punishment in some cases. People see it as, wow, I want my kid to get to go to the new school too, so. Let's listen to our public comment.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to start beginning in Sun Valley, so I'm going to talk fast because of time. So my cousin lives in Sun Valley area, they go to 20 middle schools, that's far away. When it wants to build a new middle school, they go to Dellicite Sky Middle School. And we could get, try and get repopulated by moving Labs and Amessis School to 20 middle school, that a lot of saved money, talk about the bus flow, like, I think that's a good idea, like, to walk to 20 middle school. I do know, like, in the northwest Reno, which is West Chicago moved to Mountain, and then moved to Marawanka. So if you don't take action, maybe we should start building new school on the northwest, New Amessis School. And the Spark area, which is, we could get repopulated, like, Maxwell Weasley, C-Square is vibrating to the Spark Middle School. And we zone the Kate Smith and Mitchell into Spark Middle School. And like, if you live like, down under the IA intersection, we zone to Vaughn Middle School, Hidden Valley, that'd make more, much more sense for children's offering. Cool? And then Dilworth, we zone, get rid of Dodge Notch, like, we zone Moss and Dilworth into Dunn Amessis School and Dilworth Middle School. And then if you let Spark Amessis area, we zone to Lincoln Park Amessis School. And I think like, that's Sky Middle School, 20 Middle School, Creighton Middle School, Bear Hills Middle School, Spark Middle School, and Dilworth Middle School should be vibrating C-Square into Middle School level. And Mendive, they're still overcrowded, but I'd suggest it as like, not to move C-Square to Middle School level, until Sky Ranch Middle School was built. And, and thank you.
Thank you, that was a great summary.
He knows it better than I do.
You nailed it, you nailed it, thank you, Mr. Duran. Okay, so what's the pleasure, trustees, Dr. Taylor?
I just wanted to say that I think the fact that we don't have, you know, the kind of, zoning is one of the things that I was warned about, when you get on the school board, zoning is one of those things, I mean, I just want to commend, you know, the staff and Superintendent Davis and how you got the team together to do all the hard work. I mean, it was a big committee, a lot of turnout, and I think that meeting, that informational meeting with over 100 people or so, really asked a lot of questions, answered a lot of questions of people. So I just really want to commend the staff for all of that work and having such an open process. I mean, there are a lot of moving pieces to this, but when people show up, they look for what's going to happen to my neighborhood, my kid. And, you know, it seems to me it's a sign that we landed on something, at least for now, that up to this point, people can live with. And they, you know, people, everybody knew what was coming, you can't build 15 new schools without there being rezoning. And I think that was a part of it as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis.
And I'll have the Chief of Staff come up and just kind of give a quick message, but also remember, we changed the process of what the old zoning style was to pockets over here zone for themselves, pockets over here. We made it a district-wide zoning, so a group of people will look at it. So there was equity, and it wasn't this group got this, this group got that. We really tried to clean that process up before the recommendations were brought forward to the board. Or maybe I said it all, and you don't need to add.
Justice Feenster, did you have something else before? I saw your mic on.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I heard the Superintendent say that it was a district-wide opportunity, and it was. It was a district-wide opportunity to take a look at schools and to back up that train that's keeping us segregated as schools. And we did not take that opportunity. Again, I'm hoping that the magnet programs will do this. I, I'm hopeful, very hopeful. I, I look at this board, and we've got talent on this board. Any other district would have looked at us and said, wow, what an opportunity, what a golden opportunity to actually get our schools and just do as much rezoning as possible to get exactly what Thurgood Marshall was going for in 1954. We had it, we had it. And the research is clear. I hope that maybe over the next week or two, you could do as much reading as possible about what's going on in America with regards to the resegregation of schools, and see what we could do, beginning right here in Washoe County, what we could do to possibly make a difference, make that difference that should have happened 60 years ago, whatever it is.
Thank you, Justice Feenster.
No, just a minute, I just, we are all educators. We're all brilliant in our own light. And I want our students to know about the cultures, the lives, the religions, that they can get it through the curriculum, of course. But when you are with students on a day-to-day basis, you get to know who they are, what they're about, what their cultures mean, and that's the future of America. Yes, I appreciate the work, I know it's hard, because I served on every single committee there was. But we always tried to come up with ways of getting diverse schools. We always tried our best, and I'm just wondering if this work is our best. I am wondering if it's our best. If it's our best, I would say that I think we can dig a little deeper, a little deeper, work a little harder, because we have a lot of schools that we could work with, and the parents do enjoy the dialogue. Yes, there's a lot of tension, and you know that, there's a lot of tension. But I got to tell you, in the end, it has worked for us, but yet it's always slipped back into resegregation. So I would just ask if I could get the numbers of the schools at this point of what the ethnic population would look like before the magnet schools come in.
Can I go back to Superintendent Davis? I know you wanted David to say something, and then I think Neil has some comments as well.
So I think, David, were you good with me talking about the change? And if not, you can add to it.
Well, David Lasik, Chief of Staff for the record. So a couple of comments that President Holland touched on already. I think the reason we don't see the controversy is because a lot of this was dealt with at the zoning meetings. We had a lot of meetings, we had a lot of public outreach. We did connect ed calls to each specific area that was involved prior to the meeting to invite them to meeting, a lot of flyers home to students about the meetings, a lot of public outreach, and this is a different process. It's a new committee, and I think you said it before, that we have to honor the work of the committee, and the committee's done a lot of work around this. Gina Session has done in-depth training with us and with the committee around the things you're bringing up. So I think all of that is taken into account, into the decisions that were made and brought to you as recommendations.
Superintendent Davis, thank you, David.
I'll let the lawyer go after me, he might be going in my same direction. Because, yeah, you might. I think one of the challenges we have naturally is de facto segregation, right? Like, that is what it is in our area and where people live at, and we're talking about some massive school-wide, then we're talking about open enrollment and buses and cost, and we will be more than happy to research that, but we don't make a DSA per pupil to allow us to bankrupt the system, because we've actually looked at how we could provide transportation. As we look at equity and access for CTE programs and signature academies, right? That cost alone to give, provide equity and access is something we haven't been able to put our minds around and grapple the cost of. But I think we live in a, it's de facto, it's not by anything that we have tried to do in sheer numbers. And it is an opportunity with magnet school, is to create some of that culture that you're talking about, that's why we are researching that, so you get kids that can come from all over and provide transportation. But when we start talking that district-wide, there is a cost that the board would have to look at as it relates to zoning. No, you weren't going there?
No, I wasn't, sorry. I could go there if you want me to. So with regard to federal law and civil rights laws, I think one of the things we have to be careful of is the law now, at this point, says what you can't do is you can't restrict those who are readily identifiable protected class. So our, for example, RREG 7107 specifically says, you have to avoid placing a transportation burden on any identifiable diversity subgroup, such as socioeconomic, race, ethnicity, EL or disability. So if you were to zone folks, children, in a way that would make it restrictive or impossible for them to get to school, that would be a violation of due process laws, it would be a violation of FAP, it would probably result in a 1983 action, which means they would be able to sue us in torts law as well. So what we follow in our district is pursuant to Board Policy 7105 subsection D, which I know staff provided, but I just want to draw your attention here. It does say, "The district shall consider several factors when creating school attendant zones and/or rezoning of current school attendant zones. When appropriate, considerations shall be paid to any financial implications related to these factors: safety of students, proximity of students to an individual school, as the Superintendent just said, the impact student demographic changes will have on existing educational programs within each school affected, space, transportation issues, timing of planned facility expansions, growth impact as determined by the number of location of approved but unbuilt subdivisions, and capacity and enrollment." So those are the eight factors that you should consider in making your decisions, and nothing else. else.
So that brings us back to what, what process do we want to use? Do you want to go through each one again, or do you want to, is, are there motions that anyone would like to make at this time? Trustee Raymond.
Madam President, I'd like to move forward with motions for at least items 3.05 through 3.08, and I'll begin with item 3.05.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendations of the Zoning Advisory Committee to modify the zoning boundaries of Fred W. Trainer Middle School and Sparks Middle School, moving students who attend Lois Allen Elementary School, Esther Bennett Elementary School, Virginia Palmer Elementary School, and Sun Valley Elementary School to Desert Skies Middle School, effective for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. We have a motion by Trustee Raymond, second by Trustee Frankel. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to 3.06.
I'll make that as well.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Zoning Advisory Committee to modify the zoning boundaries of Fred W. Trainer Middle School and Archie Clayton Middle School, moving students who attend Dorothy Lemelson Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Academy from the Clayton Zone to the Trainer Zone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Raymond, second by Trustee Dr. Taylor. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You're on a roll. Please continue.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Zoning Advisory Committee to modify the zoning boundaries of George Westergaard Elementary School and Roland Mountain Elementary School, moving a segment of students who attend George Westergaard Elementary School to Roland Mountain Elementary School, effective for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. Motion by Trustee Raymond, second by Trustee Dr. Taylor. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Zoning Advisory Committee to modify the zoning boundaries of George Westergaard Elementary School and Sarah Winnebago Elementary School, moving a segment of students who attend George Westergaard Elementary School to Sarah Winnebago Elementary School, effective for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. Motion by Trustee Raymond, second by Trustee Dr. Taylor. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Trustee Raymond, for moving us down the track. And I welcome the board's pleasure on the remaining items.
I'll make the next one. I'm okay with this one. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Zoning Advisory Committee to modify the zoning boundaries of George L. Dilworth Middle School and Sparks Middle School, moving students who attend Kate Smith Elementary School and Robert Mitchell Elementary School from George Dilworth Middle School to Sparks Middle School, effective for the 2019-20 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Raymond. Is there discussion? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Me.
Okay. Trustee Mayor.
Breaking up my neighborhood. That's nice, though. That's right. My kids will go all the way north. Sparks Middle, when they can throw a rock at Dilworth, it's nice. Thanks for breaking up the neighborhood.
Does anyone want to make any motions on 3.10?
If I recall, this is the boot. Is that right, Paul? Okay, so I'm okay with this one. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Zoning Advisory Committee to modify the zoning boundaries of Robert Mitchell Elementary School, George Dilworth Middle School, Hidden Valley Elementary School, and Otis Vaughn Middle School, moving a segment of students who attend Robert Mitchell Elementary School and George Dilworth Middle School to Hidden Valley Elementary School and Otis Vaughn Middle School, respectively effective for the 2019-2020 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Frankel, second by Trustee Kelly. Is there discussion? Is there public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there a motion on 3.11? Trustee Kelly.
I move that the Board approve the recommendation of the Zoning Advisory Committee to modify the zoning boundaries of Kate Smith Elementary School, Robert Mitchell Elementary School, and Agnes Rizley Elementary School, moving segments of students who attend Kate Smith Elementary School and Robert Mitchell Elementary School to Agnes Rizley Elementary School, effective for the 2019-2020 school year.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Kelly, second by Trustee Raymond. Is there discussion?
Can I get a quick review of this one? Just want to make sure I understand this one because I'm trying to, I suppose there's been so many. So can I just quickly see the back and forth so I see what's moving?
Sure.
Thank you.
So again, I believe this is the right one.
Microphone, Paul? Thanks. You got it. She got it.
Okay, so what you have here is you have Kate Smith's boundary to the left of the bottom in the brown, and Mitchell's to the right of the bottom of the brown. And then the next slide's going to blow up, just the area.
Okay.
So you see the boundary for Kate Smith right now. Let's just do Kate Smith first. And you're going to see it crawl down Sullivan and then below Jesse Avenue. And then also what that does is, so when you look at, is that Audi Boulevard? Yeah. So when you look at Audi Boulevard right now, that's the southern boundary for Rizley. So that change also affects Rizley. So now all those kids go to Rizley. Now, if you look at Mitchell, you see that section that is sort of, you see Sparks or Rock Boulevard where it kind of curves over, and then you see up above that blue line that demarcates Kate Smith, a group of homes. So those that are west of Rock would now go to Rizley.
Let's move that one more time.
So Rizley's boundary is significantly expanded, and we see that both Kate Smith is smaller in two ways, and Mitchell is smaller in two ways. Now, remember the impact data. So Kate Smith is bursting at over 122%. This would bring them down below 100%. It also brings Mitchell, which is above 100% capacity, down to 80. Now, it pushes Rizley, which is right now underutilized, up to sort of proper utilization.
And the, and the Rizley boundary is now Audi.
No, it's below Audi.
Well, currently.
Currently, it's Audi.
It's Audi, yeah. And then it would move, so those kids would be crossing Audi.
Right.
But we really do need to help Kate Smith. And that's 3.11. And we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there further discussion on this? Anything, Mr. Mayor, that you want to say?
Well, it's just that all around Sparks High right there will go all the way to Rizley. This is a neighborhood that's been a neighborhood. I go from being the north, I'm going to be the south boundary now at Mitchell. It's ridiculous. Why even take anybody in that area to Rizley? Doesn't make sense.
So the committee was moved by these numbers. And I hear you. And that was actually among the emotional discussions that we've had, which were very few. This is one that came up. And so I don't remember exactly where the previous split was, but it kind of broke up one of the sort of kind of micro neighborhoods in half. And so working with the principal, we sort of fixed that. I hear you, Mr. Mayor, and I respect your opinion. But I think that, I can't speak for the committee, but I believe what they were primarily persuaded by was the need for Kate Smith to experience some relief. I will, I will remind the committee that by and large, these kids all will go to Sparks High School. Okay? Even when, before they went to Dilworth, they, by and large, went to Sparks.
Till there's a new high school built.
Right.
Then they'll go to, a lot of them will go there. They'll be split up, they'll be split up with, between the middle schools and the high schools because some are going to Dilworth, some are going to Sparks Middle.
Right, but the previous move has them now going to Sparks. So I hear you.
What else could we do to help Kate Smith?
Well, I think the area that bothers me the most is the, I'm going to have to point to it. It's this area here.
Yeah.
That's the area that bothers me the most. And I think this is going on, I'm not sure what's here in terms of population for Kate Smith, but this is the area that concerns me the most, and that's the one I'm, makes me question this.
So unfortunately, that, and that's fine. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that is a Mitchell change, so that doesn't help Kate Smith. So remember the, the boundary. So above, you see where Brunetti Way is, all the way over to Rock? That's all going to Mitchell. So that change doesn't really affect Kate Smith.
What I see is not that Kate Smith is this change. It was here.
Right.
Right. So why does this have to happen? I guess is the question between Mitchell and Rizley.
Well, see, the big, she's right. Go back to that, and where the kids are is that square, excuse me, between El Rancho Boulevard, Audi, and Sullivan Lane, right in there, that area that you got going to That's, Kate Smith should leave that and leave Sparks High, I mean Sparks High around Sparks High there in Mitchell. You're taking on a lot of kids that just walked down Sullivan Lane to Kate Smith and shipping them all the way up. That's pretty drastic, I think.
So we have a motion and a second, and we can certainly have action on that motion. We could have the motion withdrawn and replace it with another motion to send it back. What's the pleasure of the board?
I just want to make one comment, too. People in that area are working two and three jobs. They don't come to a meeting on zoning. You know, I mean, just, and they just take it, you know, government's moving my kids north. That's, so they're not going to cry or anything, but Ms. Franklin and myself are a voice for those kids. And I heard her loud and clear. I hope she heard me loud and clear because there's no sense in moving those kids up there to Rizley.
Mr. Kelly?
Madam President, I'm more than happy to withdraw the motion, especially since to the trustees that represent that area have some concerns. So I'd be happy to do that.
Seconder agrees. Okay. Is there another motion?
No, there's just a question if I may. What was the rationale for taking that block and moving it to Rizley? Because it doesn't impact Kate Smith, and that's really what we're trying to do, right?
Randy's coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Randy Paxley, school planner. The rationale for it is on that top chart there, follow Mitchell's cross. They're over capacity now, they're going to be getting worse. That was the idea for moving that section out, is to address the current and the worsening projected overcrowding at Mitchell Elementary School. I guess if you don't wish to, you know, look at rezoning that particular area, do you have any recommendations of how we do address the overcrowding at Mitchell? And I'd be happy to look at any suggestions you might have.
Trustee Raymond?
Sorry, I don't have a recommendation for that, but I did wonder for the Kate Smith, I'm assuming you looked at Bernice Matthews because it shares that western border, but was there?
Right.
Are they overcrow, I don't know their status right now.
They're not over capacity, but they're pretty close to it. And to be able to move enough students out of Kate Smith to bring them below capacity would push, yeah, would push Matthews over, so you're basically just be exchanging the problem across the street.
And growing the problem in one way. Then you would have a situation which those kids now who go to Sparks High School would likely be zoned, either they would be in a split feeder situation, or they'd be going to HUG.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think Randy raises a really important point, and it's less pronounced at Mitchell than it is at Kate Smith. Kate Smith, as we all know, is, it's locked. It's locked down in terms of those neighborhoods, and it's over capacity. And, and I don't, maybe Ms. Zimmerman is still here. I don't believe there's any ability to put additional portables. We, the all-purpose rooms are not, they can't sustain it for that long.
She is here. Would you like to say anything, Tammy?
You're correct, Paul. Any addition to Kate Smith would reduce their playground. They wouldn't have a large enough multipurpose room. I mean, they're doing a library in the mobile, the mobile right now. It doesn't provide any of those opportunities if we think about putting an addition on at Kate Smith.
And we want those kids to have that overcrowding relieved because it is terrible. Mr. Mayor, do you have any ideas?
Are you property, in charge of getting property? Because all around Kate Smith playground, there's trailer courts and things like that that are in disrepair. In fact, I'm working on a deal, there's a house right by the playground that was caught on fire, and it's now a homeless shelter without being designated. And teenagers, the principal showed it to me, I showed it to the council, I showed it to everybody. Some of that property should be acquired and extend Kate Smith's property.
We could, we could definitely look at that, Mr. Mayor, but we would probably be looking at eminent domain, which is a long and arduous process to do that.
Well, I don't know, because if anybody goes in there and looks at that stuff, it's going to be harder for them to get it up to code.
For your, just so you guys know that, we've tried with Sparks High School to acquire property adjacent to that, and nobody wants to sell it to us right now. So it's, it's really, we can definitely look at it, Mr. Mayor, but it's, it's a really long process to get through.
You know, those apartments right there that we're talking about, they want to sell after the murders that they had in there.
So let's, so let's maybe send this back for at least some, some other considerations. And any ideas that anyone has that might be helpful to it? And again, we do need to relieve the overcrowding at Kate Smith. Superintendent, did you want to say anything?
So if the idea is that we don't want to move kids, what's, can, what is the likelihood, like, I'm okay with what we do, right? But what is the likelihood we make it a two-story school?
Structurally, we'd have to go back and look at that, and based on the age of it, it would cost a good sum of money to do that. We can definitely look at making it a two-story school.
Right, like, if people are like so gung-ho to keep the kids there, and we're trying to eliminate capacity, right? Some schools, they convert them to two-story schools, that way you get, so I was just curious, but you're right, it is a very old building.
Based on the age and the seismic and all of that that we'd have to go through, you're looking at a good sum of money to do that and retrofit the existing structure to handle that second story.
Well, let's put some brainstorming on this.
I have a question on that. By the age of Kate Smith, you probably took the building they tore down, that was a school when I was there. They've added that wing not too long ago, and my life was added. And that is built as on the California plan, like all the rest of those schools. So I don't know about the structure, but I think. So, I don't know about the structure, but I think, uh, it should be done, Mayor.
We can definitely look at it, Mr. Mayor, but based off the new seismic codes and the new regulations that come into effect with the building codes, that it would, it would cost money to retrofit the existing building as well.
I would also mention, you know, along those lines. Thank you. Right now, quite obviously, Kate Smith is severely undersupplied with parking, doesn't meet the landscape codes. Still able to get away with it right now, because in zoning terms, it's called an existing non-conforming use, which means it predated the changes in zoning codes that allow you, that, you know, put those standards on. When you do that kind of an addition onto existing structure, you're required to bring it up to meet the existing zoning codes, and there is not anywhere close to enough space to, to supply adequate parking for that facility.
Well, I, just based on the concerns that have been expressed by the trustees that represent that district, I would, I would like to, um, at least not act on it tonight, see if there are any other, if folks can brainstorm any options that we might have to relieve that overcrowding at Kate Smith, and bring that one back in your, in your next, uh, group of zoning committee recommendations. If anyone would like to make that motion, we'll see if that flies.
I still move. I support that.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, and, and with that, the caveat is that, um, all of us who have those concerns need to share ideas with, with Randy and Paul and the zoning committee, so that we can get a resolution to this, so... Is there any other discussion, Mr. Mayor?
No, but I have some suggestions, who do I talk to?
Why don't you talk to Dr. Lamarcas, and we can get them to the right place? Okay? That's great, thank you, I know they'll appreciate that. Uh, is there any public comment on this item, JJ? Okay. We have, Peggy, do you have public comment on, on 3.11?
No.
Okay.
I have a comment regarding the change.
We're, we're on 3.11.
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, so we, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. No, that's okay. So, 3.11, we have, uh, we have sent back for some brainstorming and hopefully, um, ideas. Let's go to 3.12. 3.12 is the Lena Juniper to Alice Maxwell, and, um, do we have a motion on that one?
Again, Ms., uh, Dr. Lamarcas, if, if you would, I'm, I'm sorry, Randy, I know you're, would you kind of show us again, we're on 3.12, it's been a little bit, would you just remind us of that recommendation?
Yes, so here you have Juniper, um, and its boundary is along McCarran Boulevard, as is Maxwell's. Um, and its boundary also crosses Pyramid Highway. So, you see where Juniper is in the yellow, and it's also in the, like, orange, or burnt, whatever that color is. And so, the zoning change would make the Juniper line at Pyramid. And so, the kids who are, uh, north of McCarran and west of Pyramid would now go to Maxwell Elementary School. They already go to Sparks Middle School, so they already do make that journey across McCarran. So, this one is essentially doing away with a split feeder situation, meaning Juniper right now has kids going both to Sparks and to Mendive. So, it cleans that up, and it lowers the capacity at Juniper, and Juniper right now is over capacity. There's the impact of it.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions, or is there a motion?
I have a question. If you took that area there, Village Greens, and you took them to Rizley, because if you go and bus them to Maxwell, you might as well just take them on to Rizley. I mean, it's only down the street from Maxwell. By Sparks Middle, you go down York Way, and it's right there, you can do it. Actually, I think it'd be simpler than, because Maxwell, they gotta go in the back way and around that horseshoe.
But they would be driving past Maxwell to go to Rizley?
No, they'd just go north of it.
They'd come down Weetacun.
Yeah.
And then go down Sullivan. However, it's, I, I understand, it's something that, that you can direct us to look into.
Actually, the, uh, that was an option that was presented to the zoning committee, they took that into consideration. Dr. Lamarcas mentioned earlier that there's kind of a chain involved in all of these. And what happens is, the chain involved with that, when if you take this area, you send it to Rizley instead, that precludes you being able to use Rizley to relieve Kate Smith and Mitchell in the previous item. In that case, the, the alternative to relieve Kate Smith and Mitchell, as presented to the committee, was to send those students over to Lincoln Park. By doing that, you preclude being able to do the rezone in the Marina area from Moss over to Lincoln Park, and because you haven't taken those students out of Moss, then you cannot do the rezone from Whitehead down to Moss. So, there is a whole chain that's involved in these links here.
Could I question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You know, the corner of the Village Green?
Microphone, sorry.
The corner between, um, Village Green and Florence Drake. I mean, they couldn't get any closer to each other. Maybe you could take those Village Greens to Florence Drake, because I know Florence Drake is not above capacity.
That's one thing, I did look at that, and you're correct, the Drake does have the capacity for it. But in terms of, uh, you know, then the council made earlier about the difficulties of students crossing McCarran versus Pyramid, in this case, they would be crossing both.
But you're going to bus them, right?
That's something that we would need to talk to Rick Martin, transportation part.
Well, if you're taking, if you're taking them to Alice Maxwell, you gotta bus them.
Yeah, the, the domino there that I would be a little more concerned with is that Drake matriculates to Dilworth, and right now, those students matriculate to Sparks Middle School. So, that could end up being a factor when we look at some of these other changes, where we're swapping out kids with Dilworth to Mendive. I don't know that that's the case, um, but, yeah.
I got an answer for you. Make Kate Smith a magnet school. Send Kate Smith guys that aren't part of the magnet to Agnes Rizley. Leave Robert Mitchell the way it is. We need, quite frankly, to be honest, we need a good, a good magnet school in the Sparks area.
I can tell you for, for a fact, Rizley does not have the capacity to absorb all of Kate Smith's students.
Pardon me?
I, I can tell you with certainty, Rizley does not have sufficient capacity to absorb all of Kate Smith's students.
Well, break it up and send some to, uh, to Florence Drake.
We could, that, that would be, um, you know, if the, the board wishes to direct it, basically, we no longer follow the neighborhood school concept, and, you know, we start doing the, these spot rezonings like that, we could certainly look at doing that. That would be at, at your direction, too, if you wanted to pursue that approach.
What we, what we can do is, we can't, we cannot bring to you any recommendation that includes building or, or creating a magnet school. It's not in the purview of this committee. Administration can do that, and then we will follow along with appropriate action. What we can do, based on the previous conversation, when we bring this item back, and I don't know how it'll play out in terms of numbers, but we can look at the change with Kate Smith without making a change at Mitchell. And, and, and John, I guess my, excuse me, that was, Mr. Mayor, the, the only, the only concern I have with that is, we are still, in that scenario, breaking up the neighborhood that currently goes to Kate Smith. I don't see a way out of that. And you kind of just indicated if there was another program there, that'd probably be okay. So, we can, we can split that and see how it affects other numbers, such as the, the Lincoln Park scenario. Uh, Mitchell, in, in that case, so that you know, and we'll bring that to you, Mitchell would remain over 100% capacity for the foreseeable future. But we'll bring that to you, so that you have the opportunity to split that. Okay? So, we're back on, we're actually on Juniper.
Yep, we're on 3.12. Is there a motion on 3.12? I, I guess I would ask, Mr. Mayor, are you uncomfortable with all the remaining items?
I'm uncomfortable with, yeah, probably. Um, let's see, 13, that's the one up on the board. Marvin Moss, Lincoln Park, I'm fine with that. Mendive Middle School.
Yeah, you're okay with 3.14. What about 3.13? That's...
Yeah. That one, that's for the Catherine Dunn and Moss. I'm all right with that one.
Okay.
And I'm all right with, uh, 15, I believe. Because Dilworth's really staying the same, right? It's, uh, it's Mendive that's changing in, in 315, right?
Yeah. It's actually Dilworth kids are going to Mendive, yeah. Mendive is just marginally creeping up, but then we'll get the relief with Spanish Springs.
Yeah, I'm okay with that one.
Okay, and then what about 3.16, which is Whitehead?
Whitehead and Moss, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
So, why don't we, can we, can we make a motion on, yeah, okay, go ahead, Trustee Taylor.
I think we're thinking the same thing.
Yes.
Uh, Madam President, I would like to move, um, that the Board of Trustees approves the record, this is gonna be a multifaceted motion.
As we love U4.
Move, move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the zoning committee to modify the zoning boundaries of Marvin Moss Elementary School, Catherine Dunn Elementary School, Lou Mendive Middle School, and George L. Dilworth Middle School, moving a segment of the students who attend Marvin Moss Elementary School and Lou Mendive Middle School to Catherine Dunn Elementary School and George L. Dilworth Middle School, respectively. In addition, I would like to move, I would like, yeah, I got them marked. Oh, I don't need to say it all, I can just say numbers? Oh, well, shoot, okay, good, I move, move to approve agenda item 3.13, 3.15, and 3.16.
And 3.14.
And 3.14, yes, I didn't see my check mark, yes, and 3.14.
Okay.
13, 14, 15, and 16.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, thank you, Trustee Raymond, uh, motion by Trustee Taylor, second by Trustee Raymond. Is there further discussion? Is there public comment on those items? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, hallelujah. What, um, would you, what, what's the pleasure of the board with regard to 3.12? Mr. Mayor, you have some ideas on 3.12? You'd like to send it back to staff and share some ideas with them?
Yes, I'd like to do the same thing as, uh, Robert Mitchell.
As 3.11?
Yeah, both of those, uh, because I, I really think they should look at, uh, as long as those kids are on bus, and they go to, over here to Florence Drake. How about Greenbury? It looks like it's awfully...
Well, we're not, yeah, we're not on that one right now, so, so, uh, this would involve, uh...
So, the, 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 the concern's gonna be that we've taken action out here with Dilworth now, so that's going to affect the ability there, but, so we're bringing back these two items?
Well, not yet.
Okay.
We have to take action on 3.12. So, on 3.12, the, um, I, we would entertain a motion to, uh, return, uh, 3.12 to the committee and, uh, request that any board members or anyone else who has ideas that can help brainstorm some solutions on that would provide those to Dr. Lamarcas and Mr. Baxley for consideration.
So move.
Okay, motion by Trustee Taylor, second by Trustee Frankel. Is there, uh, any further discussion? Is there any public comment on 3.12? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right, motion carries. So, we have gotten through, ooh, 3.16, and we are now on, uh, item four.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, uh, and thank you, Mr. Baxley. Thank you to everyone who helped with this, all the families who came out, and, uh, our zoning advisory committee. We are most grateful, I know you will tell them that, thank you. Okay, uh, item 4.01 is board reports. Does anyone want to make a board report? Hearing none? Oh, did I say that too fast? Okay, how about, uh, 4.02, superintendent's report?
Oh, I just...
I'm near me the party pooper. So, I just want to give a shout out to the leadership team. Um, when we did the renowned radio-a-thon, I challenged them all to, um, participate and challenge the soup, and while there were no phones ringing, once I made the call, they were ringing off the hook, and we raised thousands of dollars, so, a big shout out to the leadership team for supporting me in the radio-a-thon. Um, as part of our CTE workforce development tours, I did have a chance to visit Ranchera Construction with QD and Katara, and look at some of the things they're doing, and how we can also marry those with our, um, career technical pathways. And what's really cool is, we actually have a female graduate who is an engineer working out there at Katara, so it's really exciting to see some of that work. Members of our staff did go to the celebration of life for Jean Jones, I think that's super important, as Redfield has been a supporter of the district in many things, and it was a beautiful celebration. So, for the members of the staff that join me in that, I'm so happy. Okay, I have to show this picture, because we handed out our first diploma. The day spring break started, Mary Sheets turned 100 years old. Mary Sheets, um, is a former district employee, she worked in food service, she retired when she was 70. Um, on that Saturday, one of the things that never happened for Mary Sheets was she never received a high school diploma. So, I was very honored to go spend some time with Mary Sheets. And as you can see, Mary Sheets still bakes cookies, so everybody who attended her birthday party received home-baked delicious cookies, might I add. But what a blessing to turn 100, and what a blessing to see her receive, um, her high school, uh, high, honorary high school diploma. And of course, there were many tears, but I think it's important that we know about some great celebrations in our community and events, and she was just thrilled to receive a high school diploma.
Good.
I understand you want me to reopen 4.01, Mr. Mayor, so you...
Yeah, because I, I want to say that the conference that we just went to was one of the best I've ever been to. Terry Bradshaw was wonderful. But I want to shout out to Dr. Taylor and Superintendent Davis that did a beautiful job to a packed house at, uh, Monday, when a lot of people leave the conference and go elsewhere. But, uh, people, it was well-received, and, uh, people were asking me, where do we get a video and stuff? So, I hope they can get it through, but it was really, really well, well worth going to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and, and kudos, uh, to our team that make us proud. So, thank you for being there and doing that. Okay, do we have, uh, item 5.01, any future agenda item requests? Okay, I don't hear any of those. And then we have, uh, 5.02, our closing public comment. And, um, and Peggy Leirboen, you have three minutes, and that's all.
Okay, I submitted another card when I...
Yeah, but you have only a total of three minutes for all the things that you want to say, so, um, please, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name and words for the record, my name is Peggy, P.E. Leir, L-E-A-R, Bowen. B-O-W-E-N. And I would like to address a couple of things, uh, after reading some articles in the newspaper. And I love what you're doing today, it's absolutely magnificent. But if you ever do have to consider, uh, putting sixth graders back into middle schools, and, and that, that works in whatever you do, whatever you have to come up with, please, 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 do not have tracking when you, if you have to do that. Tracking destroyed our communities, because not all three levels of school that the kids went to were on the same track, and so families couldn't do vacations, they couldn't do outings together, because somewhere, somewhere, one of those elementary... one of those elementary, middle, or high school kids were doing something else, and it didn't agree with the tracking that was going on. And lives and families and this community was destroyed by that family unit being destroyed by not having the grouping together. So whatever you do, if you consider consolidating, putting sixth graders back, please don't ever put our community through tracking again. Their lives were destroyed forever. They lost that family unity bond. That was number one. Strongly, strongly, strongly recommend a workshop for this board, because I read the articles about some people writing articles about how much was being spent on legal fees. We had, at a point in time, a situation where we had a superintendent of Marshall County School Board of Trustees fire a police chief for not following a direct order. And hue and cry went out throughout this community because he'd worked long and hard and everything else, and it went back to Sparks Middle School. And what we have to remember, and you all have information that we, the public, don't have as to that situation. And what transpired on a given day at a given time is two young people who were wounded during that Sparks shooting day worked together at a gathering with the superintendent of that time and with the police chief of that time. And they, the boy wrote letters, and they were published in the paper, and it's a matter of public record, that you don't, that he went to school after seeing a movie on a Friday where a girl came to school carrying a gun to get the bullies to leave him, leave her alone. And he came to school with the same intent, and that was to get the bullies to leave him alone. He'd gone to council, he'd gone to everybody. And he ended up going to the school, and he was going to take care of the kids and the teachers who had been bullying him. And we need to have everybody either get it out on record what took place, or at least have it among yourselves what took place, so that we are not in a situation where people are talking about guns in schools and teachers and all sorts of things. Shoot.
Ms. Boen.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. We will consider this meeting adjourned. Got it. Thank you.